Good evening, everybody. This is the caucus meeting for February 28, 2024, Council Chambers. Pressiding Officer of the Council, my lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that the notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the City Clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber's City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30. Right now it's 5:31 PM. The council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including the members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Broko, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Councilman Torres.
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present. Okay, topics for discussion tonight, we're having interviews for the following boards. One is for Arts Council, Housing Authority, and Zoning Board of Adjustment. So I guess we're going to start with Viviana Martinez. She is for the Arts Council.
Hello.
Yes.
Hi, hello. My name is Viviana Martinez.
Yes, that's what we want.
So my name is Viviana Martinez. I go by DeDe, but we call him DeDeBam Bam like we know. I grew up in East Brunswick, jumped around Central New York a little bit, and now I call for example at my home. I grew up with friends who were undocumented, so I've faced a lot of the community issues that impacted us directly, whether it be financial, security, housing security. And I want to study on, want to propose policies of policy at our community birthday, and that we can certainly do well at the community, work in the community politics. I currently work for an immigrant rights organization, the Free Women's Alliance for Human Justice, the State Law Division of American Coalition, fighting for policies that protect immigrant immigrants. Program manager, so I pretty much create programs and trainings that really empower communities, advocates, and activists in communities. And in my time as a program manager, I've had the opportunity to connect with artists as well as just like art activists as well. Processively create promotional materials for our events and our rallies. Of course, I've had the pleasure of really connecting with folks to work at the intersection of arts and advocacy. I'm really excited to be here today to share more about my interest about the Arts Council as well as share some of my ideas that I have for the Arts Council.
Any question, anything? I'll leave it up to Councilman Torres.
Thank you so much for your interest in applying for the Arts Council. My only question is, what program or how you think that Perth Damboy could improve by using the arts? How can we improve our aesthetics in our outlook and how people perceive Perth Damboy? You know, and how do you think that that could be improved with the arts?
That's a good question. So when we look at some areas we were at, when we think arts are important, we often think of like Broadway or woodchairs or the touches, for example. And even though Perth Damboi has such a rich ownership of culture and artists and artists, you don't have the necessary structure for creating them. So I have some ideas, short term, middle term, long term. Maybe if they're completely short term, it may be working with the crochet club at the library. Perth Damboi Library to create fiber arts, public fiber arts for the community. Something middle, maybe middle term is creating installation, a rotating installation of local artists to be displayed in pubs of the city, maybe in the Y or the library or other parts of the city. And I see also an opportunity to really develop a cultural art district in Perth Damboi and making sure that we can have an opportunity where kids and also families and communities are saying, wow, like, my city's beautiful, my city's really taking care of that. We are a special community, but also making sure that the community can probably say what the arts like and what the arts tend to like. I'll share one example that I take names of Baltimore. I visited Baltimore for work, and there was a mural that I walked past. And on the bottom it said that it was painted and distributed by the children of a local school. And then they signed it with their campaign name on it. And I thought, when I came back to Perth Damboi, and I was just like, that's amazing. Imagine a mural where a seven-year-old signs their name and maybe twenty years down the road from the mural to go there and they can say, I continue this in my city. This is my mark in my city. And that's really beautiful. So I would love to do something like that.
Great, great, thank you. Yeah, I love your enthusiasm, and I think you will do great if you get elected, you know, put in that position. Anybody else?
I'd just have a comment. I think your ideas are great, and it's nice to see the youth and people of your generation and age to really get involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to say thank you for your advocacy and for sharing your vision and what you see. My question is, what motivated you specifically to join the Arts Council? Why out of all the boards, why the Arts Council?
That's a great question. I grew up in East Brunswick, Fort Worth, Fort Worth, East Brunswick, three different places. And the city of East Brunswick really has got certain art opportunities. So I did a dance troupe for the city. I think I'm a year old for the city. I knew it was such a great opportunity. And I can see that being happening here in Perth Damboi, where the city is really got to be part of opportunities for the community so that they can really have that contribution. I do art, I do crochet, and then on the side I make stuff to put in my hometown. And I want to bring that to the library here as well. So I really wanted to be part of the community process here in the city of Perth Damboi to add new parts. So that's what really brought me to the Arts Council.
I love how you mentioned the library. I think that's important to really collaborate and work together with different departments to raise awareness and to utilize the spaces as well.
Thank you so much for bringing up Arts District because all, everything shows that investing in an Arts District not only promotes and encourages, you know, healthy community relations, but it's also a great economic driver. One of the largest economic drivers for Irving cities in the last 20 years has been investing in arts and culture. And this is something that I think that Perth Damboi has, we have so much. It's one of our greatest assets. And thank you for bringing that up. I think it's an encouragement for us to kind of reinvest in that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now we'll have Che Gomez.
Hello.
I'm Che Gomez, about, over the, back the street.
Get closer to the mic. Speak a little bit about yourself, what you have done, why you're interested in being part of the Arts Council.
I'm Che Gomez, I was doing National Guard, I'm a citizen, I'm a lady. I volunteer work for crocheting, I do other. I do volunteer work for the program.
I have this one question. What art programs would you like to see in Perth Damboi? What art programs do you think that the administration or maybe the library could enact? Which program you think we should have?
I would do, that we should have, something that turns the video game. About work for, these things out to go together and be each other. Small mural.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Anybody else?
No.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Now we have Chelsea Cole. You can lower a little bit.
Yes. Hi, I'm Chelsea Cole. I, well, my great, she met me in the National Security Bureau in 2014. Growing up, so our council was very lonely because my fiancee and I were still out in the population area, especially during the summer, and it's a market of things to do. Growing up, I was on fire, I was a band, I played, I have played over ten instruments, unfortunately. So music is a nice crowd, I'm trying to give some weed, or writing music, or playing music. Any of what she mentioned, for Shane class. I actually already am either for Shane class or library, so I run. I also run three other streets of the library, I do a roommate and book club. I also, I volunteer for Latin TA, so I have a lot of students there. I, my fiancee and I are on fire at our church and theater, because that's another avenue that I enjoy music with. I mentioned my concerts. I've also held various other conventions. I worked for an artist agency called National STEM Honor Society, where I was director of two departments and a member of six other departments. And that company really did me, and they gave me an opportunity to work on canvas and all these other programs for him, that like I could even get involved in concerts and also be supporting, and the concerts and making sure he loves me. So that's one of the reasons I would love to be part of Arts Council. And I'm just, you know, I'm very honored to be here today tonight. Also, I'm very excited. If I, if I do get elected, I'm just, you know, I'm glad to be here.
Thank you so much for having an interest in joining the Arts Council. I see you always participating and attending the majority of all of the arts programming here in town. My question is also, how do you think the city could improve by using the arts and using certain arts program? How do you think we could improve not only like the business district, but the city as a whole?
Well, first of all, I have been very excited to be on the real around, you know, I walk through the potential that I'm walking here at the Y, I feel real on the image too. And, you know, I love continuing that and also enjoying that. I see our kids, like, if we could educate the children in our, in Perth Damboi system. I mean, growing up, as I mentioned, playing clarinet and saxophone is a huge part of my success in school. And, you know, moderating means to have massive growth. So I would definitely start with the kids and make sure that this school system goes off core in the arts and music arts, because, as I said, it's very important.
Thank you so much.
I'm very excited to see you coming forward for this position available, because I always see you, how involved you get into whatever you put your mind on. And it's nice to see people like you getting involved in the arts.
I just comment, I appreciate how you're always out there and involved with your time, putting your time and effort into everything, and you have a passion for, whenever you join something, you do show that you do have a passion for it. So I think you would do a great asset if you did get chosen to be on.
It's like, it's like me, I also have a permanent commitment to the school.
That's very nice.
That's what I'm looking for.
I also want to thank you and Che, what you do for the community is definitely admirable. You're selfless act of service. And I also just want to ask, you're involved in so much, why the Arts Council? What about it intrigued you?
Because I want to be, you know, there's one thing that's been really important, is the quality of the community level, the community organizing, and being very supportive and being there as a community member. So I just feel that's important, and we want to participate in that.
Thank you very much. Now we have Solange Pena. Get it a little up. Okay. Speak about yourself and your interest in to be part of the Arts Council.
Well, I'm actually a career in the Arts Council.
Okay. And I don't know why you needed to come.
I'm so good, I mean, but it's okay. I guess I could say, I guess I'll just go all of my goals for the rest of the year and just moving forward. So I would like to continue the momentum that we have right now. I've been working, well, I work closely with the RAC Center, of course, and with other artists in town. We just, we had an arts walk exhibit last year, and it took place in October, where we worked with about fifteen artists, half of them were in North, half of them curated out, well, exhibited outdoors. I would say we had about, maybe like a hundred people, defenders for our event. And we had music, we had vendors, so I feel like we've been doing pretty well with our events that we've been having. We also just curated, well, I also just curated the Black Lives Empowerment exhibit that took place last Friday. We got a decent turnout, and we had few community members there. We have the NAACP that passed by, the Perth Damboi branch, NAACP, we worked with fifteen different artists, so some from Perth Damboi, some from North, some from Green City, one from New York. So we've been connecting with a lot of artists recently. And of course, we've been continuing with our, continuing our art programs in town. So I've also been teaching this year, and I'm answering a beginning class to high schoolers and art and craft, and art and craft classes. So we've been having different arts classes going on, of course, but I would just say like I would like to continue what we have going on right now. And, you know, of course, I continue working with artists in terms of like, I guess, like murals going up, whenever we do get new applications, it seems like we had about three murals this year. From I'm taking, we have the Halaab one, we add one on fifteen, I think it was fifteen. And then we have the Tupac Arrow. So we've been doing pretty good with murals and getting new applications. And of course, just kind of like assisting in how to apply for real things like that. And of course, just like working with other artists we've been getting. So feedback that I got from the Black Lives Empowerment exhibit, I've been, the artists that exhibited, they would like to work with the gallery more. So I even had one artist that he was touched by, that we work with kids. So he, I think he appreciated that we work with kids, and he would like to work with the gallery more. So we've been connecting a lot with various organizations, I would like to continue that.
Yeah, it's, I've seen your work, and it's excellent. So I am very glad that you want to continue on that position. So I'm glad to see you here.
Not only have you, you know, displayed, you know, great professionalism in your role as the Chair of the Arts Council, but you're one of our preeminent, you know, artists here in town. And you're vital to not only the evolution, but in the revitalization of the council. And your leadership has been very instrumental in how has it been proceeding and bringing in new people and new interests into the arts. And I think that's extremely important. I apologize for missing some of the events last week. I was away in Puerto Rico performing for over a week with a band. And I was able to play in Rio Piedras in San Juan. And Rio Piedras has an amazing Arts District with murals just almost everywhere. And not only do these murals tell kind of the narrative of what's going on now, but we could also express our culture and our history along with murals. This is something how we could express ourselves. It's great that we have these, but I would love to see more. And I know that's kind of one of the main interests of almost everyone on the Arts Council. So it's kind of great to have everyone being on the same page with that. But I think you've been very instrumental in having the Arts Council grow and grow from going from even biweekly, bimonthly meetings to now monthly meetings. There's no problem ever having quorum, and I think that has not had spilt the leadership.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to make a comment about, and thank you and commend you for your extreme talent. You're amazing and all what you do for the Arts Council and for our community. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you for your endless nights. I know there were many times you stood up, especially for those murals. And I'm collaborating with the team, since the questions kind of differ for you. If you can give an inspiring message, what would it be to either future artists or those wanting to join the Art Council?
So for, I guess, what was it both? Definitely, because it's been D and D. I feel like I've been very consistent with different events and things going on this year. And just, of course, like changing up my routine with everything. I've been working with the city for about five years now, but I feel like this year, like I'm definitely more, like I've learned from what I've done before, and I'm changing things kind of more this year. So I feel like I've been doing better this year, so I would say like kind of changing up my routine a bit, but like also keeping consistent with like whatever I'm doing. So I know like we have the arts walk, but now we also have the Black Lives Empowerment exhibit, now we're having open mic night. And then after that, we're working with another artist in March, and then May, June, we have more cases. So we definitely make it consistent this year. That's what I'm just saying. So I guess I can just D and D as well.
Hold on, don't go anywhere. No, I'm just saying, I've seen your work, it is really truly amazing. That's a talent, you know, and you're very talented. Thank you for your dedication.
Thank you. Okay, now for the Housing Authority, Gregory Pabon.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening.
Good evening.
God bless. My name is Gregory Pabon, Reverend Gregory Pabon. I live at Fort Worth Center National Street here in the city. I'm not here asking for the honor and privilege to continue serving under the House of Attorney, because I've been on here now, I think, close to thirteen years, and I know mostly the ins and outs, but I'm still learning. Everybody's still learning, and I am still learning. I'm on the Perth Damboi Police Chaplain's Board, and I've been on that for quite a few years now. And we do lots of things in the chaplain's board. We do death notifications, we count police officers while in the department, and we do many other things as a police chaplain. I'm also on the Jewish Renaissance Board, and I've been on that board for about maybe, maybe close to two years. I'm here because I want to be reappointed to the House of Attorney and continue serving the community and serving the city, serving the city.
I want to say thank you for the time that you have dedicated to all these boards, and I think the community really appreciates it. And I'm glad to see that with your experience, you can continue in that position.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for your dedication to the community and volunteerism and your expertise and experience. And the Housing Authority is critical to, in the longevity of the city. Thank you very much for wanting to reapply here.
Thank you, Reverend Pabon, for everything that you do. God, I know you a long time. You're a pretty dedicated guy, so thank you.
Let me say one thing.
Sure.
I know DJ has been asking questions about what we should, what would we like to see in the city? I would like to see for the youth, for we to have a class, maybe one of youth to give a class in civics. Many of the youth need to know about civics. They need to know about the government, about how, you know, how to do elections, everything about civics, because a lot of our children don't know it. I don't know, I don't know if we still teach civics in school, but just one of the things that we really do for youth, because they really need it.
Recently, there is a nonprofit organization, and they work out of Perth Damboi also, the Citizens Campaign, and they have the Perth Damboi Civic Trust. They're still active. Several years ago, they did have a youth group component of it, and this teaches our residents how to engage in government. Not necess, it teaches how to participate if you want to be an elected official or participate in boards and commissions, but it also teaches if a regular layman of a person who does not want to become an elected official, how they could also engage and maneuver the channels of government. I think recently they have been successful and implemented that class in our high schools. So I think recently they have, within a year, started teaching civics. But I would love to see that expansion and hopefully something with, along with their monthly classes, to build this, to really engage the youth, because they do have the power. And once they know how to maneuver and use the tools, we could have a great transformative change in our community. Thank you very much.
When I recall, when I was in school, we had civic classes. And I said, no, it looks like they don't teach it anymore.
No.
Yeah, they took it out for a while.
Yes, they took it out, they put in social studies instead. And at the same time, since they did that, you could see the numbers of participation of registered voters and participated, participate in government drop. So we definitely do need to revitalize that program. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, that's a great point. I work in elementary and middle school, and I did see, as I was walking around, one of the social studies teachers did teach that component and speak about the upcoming elections and how, and a little bit of brief information about that. So I agree that that is crucial, that is important. Just have a quick question. If you could highlight two major achievements within the thirteen years, what would it be? What two major achievements would you have say, since you've been on, yeah, within the board, within the Housing Authority? Yes.
Well, I've been there for almost thirteen years. I have been, I would say, once was Vice Chairman of the Board. I'm Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee of the Housing Authority. And like I said, we learn everything. We have a good, great director. He's just great, he teaches us a lot of stuff, too. And we can try to teach. And we do great things in the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Thank you for your lengthy service with the Housing Authority. Being that you've been in there for so long, what would your, what would your advice be for, like, we're talking about the youth, being in the Housing Authority, if somebody who's in the younger generation would like to be involved in the Housing Authority, what kind of advice would you give them?
Would you advise how they could get into the Housing Authority?
What, like, if they want to get involved and, you know, what kind of?
Well, we, we, like, not to state, we had, we did, um,
Ask.
For the high school kids.
Scholarships.
Scholarships. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sometimes you can, yeah, we do have scholarships for the high school kids, and a lot of them do apply, but in order for them to, we try to get them involved.
Just leading by example.
Yep.
Yep. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Heidi Burke here?
Heidi.
Heidi. Heidi? No, I don't see her.
I don't see her.
Okay, so we're gonna continue. All right, five minutes maximum per speaker, per organist. Number one, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Person, Ordinance Number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A, C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about deletions. Number two and number three, I need a motion to table it or?
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Flores?
Yes.
And Council President DeHeda?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance Number 194-70A, as amended, adopted September 1, 1978, also known as the Chapter 414, C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about King Street Loading Zone Agenda. Public comment: Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Reports: Jill A. Goldie, CFO, Controller, submitted the following 2023 Annual Financial Statement, Check Register Report for the month of January 2024, in the total amount of $10,099,038.8. Investment Report for month of January 2024. Also, the NJ Division of Taxation, Department of the Treasury, submitted the State Equalization Table for the year 2023. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy, authorizing a one-year lease agreement with Eastern Seals of New Jersey for office space in the Alexander Jankowski Community Center for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, Column 12-14, to be used for a public purpose commencing January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. Number two, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48, Column 4-45.14.
Madam President?
Yes.
I need an explanation on this. Why are, why are we expanding the cap? Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Goldie.
The cap ordinance allows us to expand from statutory two and a half percent increase year to year to go up one percent to three and a half percent. It's a standard practice that is followed by the City of Perth Amboy every year that I've been here, probably for many years prior to my being here. And it's also a standard practice that's followed by many municipalities to adopt the ordinance to allow that additional expansion of the cap. And if we put the budget together and we are within that expanded cap amount, then we're okay to proceed. If we are over that cap amount, we have to cut certain things in the budget to be able to stay within it. And if we are under the amount of the expanded cap, we can take the difference between our appropriations within the cap and that total amount and put that aside in the event we might need that in the future for budget. We're allowed to bank those amounts for two-year, for future budgets.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Resolution, R 7224, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2024 temporary budget in the amount of $223,250. R 71224, authorizing refund of code compliance fee for property located at 500 Johnston Street in the amount of $110 to Laura PC. R 72224, authorizing a contract with community grants, planning, and housing for provision of administrative agent services for the City of Affordable Housing Plan in an amount not to exceed $179,800.
Does that have an explanation on what this agency is going to, what services they're going to be providing?
Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening. CGPNH are affordable housing trust agents. The City of Perth Amboy has an affordable housing trust of nearly over $3 million, of which 20% are to be allocated to administrative fees to administer that trust. Our housing trust element or spending plan was approved by reports. It includes three components: administration, rehab, and efficiency, and rental. So those programs have to be administered by an outside agency. CGPNH was appointed last year. This is to continue their services. They're currently operating and running our rehab program, where we have over 300 folks or residents in our city, homeowners, who have applied for rehabilitation grant funding of up to $25,000. They operate that program, and this $179,000 is not just for their administrative fees, but it also covers the cost of the construction that's going towards some of the projects that they're working on this year.
Okay. Are there any other third-party agencies also involved in the housing plan, or is this the affordable?
The housing element, you have to have one administrative agent. There was an RFQ that went out. Those were rehab respondents. They were appointed last year, and we continue to provide services with them. So they're the only third-party agency for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
R 73224, authorizing the support for Morris Habitat for Humanity, Inc., NJDCA Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program, application for 99-101 Pearl Place, Perth Amboy. R 74224, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the fiscal year 24 Local Recreation Improvement Grant, LRIG Program, in the amount of $99,933.77.
Can we just expand on this one and the vision of an inclusive and what the vision of the park is?
And many municipalities are encouraged to apply for local recreation grants. Basically, we receive money for outdoor recreation, fitness centers, and that should be going up now in April. And the money we're applying for this year are to be used for inclusionary playground equipment, which will include ramps and accessibility for handicapped downed children in our parks. The goal of the administration is to make all, most, if not all, of our playgrounds inclusive for all of our children to be able to participate in outdoor activities.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
R 75224, confirming acceptance and execution of a letter of agreement between Middlesex County Office of Human Services and the City of Perth Amboy Police Department for the Station House Adjustment Program Entrepreneurship Program Two, in the amount of $30,026 for the period of February 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024. R 76224, authorizing the proper city official to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Avareton Bay High School Sailing Foundation, a nonprofit organization for its usage of the sailing and kayaking compound within Zdowski Waterfront Park and Beach for the 2024 and 2025 spring and fall sailing seasons.
I have a question. I know this nonprofit group is not from our town. It's an out-of-town group. And I'm wondering, did last year, did our recreation department, did we provide kayak and sailing services? Did, did our city provide this for our residents on the waterfront? Have we provided this service last year, and are we going to provide it this year?
I can start to address that. This program, again, is being up.
No, this is different. This is from, I'm, this is, I know what this is going, I proved this last time. I'm talking about our recreation department. In the past, our recreation department has provided kayak and sailing courses on the waterfront throughout the summer, in the afternoon hours, that adults and teenagers could use the city's kayaks and the city's small sailing boats for recreation on our beautiful waterfront. I know other cities and organizations have been using our waterfront also with an agreement from us, but I'm asking is, did we provide, did our recreation department provide this for our residents?
The recreation department is doing it through this program. So no, they're doing it through the program. They're providing it for high school students to come in and participate in the program, and the hours are Monday through Friday.
Not just high school students. This was for adults. This was for residents of Perth Amboy. Now, did we provide services for all residents? Are there, do they have the sailboats and the kayaks for the residents of Perth Amboy?
This is for the children.
Monday through Thursday?
No, this is for the high school children and children overall.
Did we have someone here from the rec department or from human services who can answer my question?
Yes, the director is here.
Can some?
Hello? I'm a woman, but I'm a service worker. Um, to answer your question, um, in the words, um, part of the community that not provides me with things, young, um, kayaking, um, there were periodic opportunities, you know, we had a program, and we subcontracted with an entity that provided the kayak. But on a regular basis, many of the five department recreations did not provide that on a monthly, contracted with an entity that would provide the equipment, um, a program that was made for me, and we had volunteered from the summer, the other folks who had actually volunteered in supporting our initiative at a specific date, but I'm basically on that.
I participated in this program in the past. I think it was one of the greatest programs that our city provided, because it provided recreation on our waterfront, one of our greatest assets. And we hired people to, to, to direct this program. And I was wondering why we stopped it. Now we give away our beautiful waterfront to our out-of-town agencies as opposed to using our assets for our own residents and our children. During COVID, one of the greatest activities that anyone could have done was anything on the waterway, was sailing or kayak, and because of the spacing between the individuality, it was one of the safest, and they encouraged people to use these waterways and these type of activities. I don't know why after that, that we're going to actually divest in something like that and let a more affluent community come and start using our assets. We were providing this. Not only this service was instrumental and provided recreational for our residents, but it allowed our children to get used to our waterways, because our waterways aren't common, but our rip currents are extreme. And if our children are unaware and are accustomed to our waterways, we can have horrible accidents in the future. So I thought that this recreation department program was instrumental in teaching our children about our waterways, because they do, they do jump in the water now and then. We are, we have one of the greatest waterways in the state. I think it's sad that here we're giving away th- this property basically to another entity and then putting our hands up in the air and saying, well, somebody else is, you know, letting our kids kayak, but we're not providing this, because we had all the resources in the world, and we still do. We still, we, we own the kayaks, and we own the, we're not asking, we already own it. We have them.
We are providing it. We're still providing it. We're just having this entity do it on our behalf. Some understand.
But when?
The issue is that we have, throughout the summer, we have periodic plans. We have, on border days, we're partnering, we're volunteering. So it's not that it's been done, but on Monday through Friday, to Monday, we mentioned on a weekly basis, we need to have a habit. So to answer your point, those are things that conversations could be used to be had, and we find something that the council wishes to keep evolving, to formalize, to go to the next people. So it's not something that is done to do, that those are not things that conversations that can be had or towards. Those are things that, like, we spoke on these over time, we need to try different things, to be creative.
Why did we stop the Monday through Thursday? Why was it eliminated? Who made that decision, and why was that decision made? It would be really nice to have the directors of the departments here at this meeting, especially when there was a lot of items dealing with recreation on this agenda.
That is the director of the department.
What?
That is the director of the department.
Human Services. There is an additional person who made that decision about eliminating this program. So the person who made the decision of eliminating this program, I would like for that person to be here to answer my question of why that program was eliminated.
We're going to eliminate the program. We try to bring new programs. So whether we took a break from a program to a season, doesn't mean that there's a decision that we continue to eliminate a program. We like to try different things, to do different, to reach in the national opinion. So it's not that it's done to do, that we're on conversations that can be, you know, we have, or we don't come to the table again, because we are creative in that way and we're flexible. It all depends on funding.
It's, the council's in the dark, because the council members kind of don't know when these programs are going to be changed, and we're not asked our opinion. So if I didn't participate in this program in the past or was aware of this program, I wouldn't have known if this program was successful in the past or if it was continuing or not. But I'm saying is, I think that it was one of the greatest programs that the recreation department did have. Our waterways are one of the greatest waterways in our, in the state, and it's one of the greatest assets of our community. We've had teen, we've had casualties of teenagers not being able to mon, to monitor these waterways, and it's very critical that our children get as much exposure to these waterways. I think that this program, if it did, if it wasn't around last year, I think that this program, if it did, if it wasn't around last year or the last couple of years, which I believe it wasn't, that we should revision this and bring this back. Uh, that, that definitely we should have sailing and kayaking for our residents and not just for the children that these people are gonna provide, but for the, all the residents in our community, especially since we already invested in having the equipment. We have the equipment. If it's, you know, if it's a matter of hiring someone, we hire a lot of people, this is something that we should be working on, implementing that, you know, by the end of May, that we have this program up and running. I know the water day is great, but it's only one day out of the year. And we have a lot of hot days, we could really enjoy our waterway.
No, I understand that you don't only have it for one day, you have times during December that you have, and I do agree that that was a wonderful program. We have many, many wonderful programs, but the item on the agenda, specifically for this program, that's information, particularly in the recreation, provided for myself and our community.
Now, this program here, does it interfere if the times that we would have had our program?
It should not interfere because a lot of times we have the small program.
But that, that's exactly when our program was. Our program was an afternoon, early evening program, Monday through Thursday, because that's where most adults could use it. What time is this program?
I would assume if you're really at the school, it would be three and half.
Two to seven.
Okay, so the same exact time that our program was. Can the two programs exist simultaneously?
I cannot answer that.
So, so what I'm, are we giving up our program so another entity can have a program there? Because we provided program for our residents around the same time you're speaking of.
This program is for our residents.
That's what I'm saying.
Can adults use it also? Because the program that we provided allowed adults to use it also for any resident of Perth Amboy.
When the program is specifically targeted for the, the athletic program, then you normally can have adults, you know-
Then our, then we, our recreation should provide that program. This way, uh, adults and our youth could both utilize it. As what I'm saying is, if this program interferes with the timing that we had our program and we're taking away our resources and opportunity for our residents, I think we really should put our residents on first instead of some outside, what time is this program from?
Two to seven.
Time, yes.
Well, it's, it's part of a streaming program, part of a streaming program, um, and we just have to contract it, like, uh, from that program that's listed. So it's not that we're taking away from our residents, our residents are getting the service, it's specifically referring adults. This program is not a, 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 a program. There are times in the year that go on stimulus, and you hear sports families, not under the, sports family, you know, included, when, you know, this is a topic in instructors, et cetera. Uh, it's just a matter of lending it up when the waters, I'm not an expert in the water and what is okay or not. So I don't want to speak without having, so it would not be given.
I have participated in a Perth Amboy recreation program that had sailing and kayak for youth and adults Monday through Thursday in the afternoon hours. And I participated for several years in that program. I thought it was amazing. I thought it was great that adults could utilize that also. I think that we should continue this. And if anything's going to interfere with that, I think we should really try to put our residents first and should really think about that. But we should really, I think, be moving to creating our own programming for our own residents. Thank you.
Um, Ms. Roman, um, didn't you just say that that is for the students of our town? So it's really providing, and, and I understand, um, Councilman Torres' point about adults, but, um, our, our students are also be, benefiting from this particular program.
Can a twenty-five-year-old, a twenty-four-year-old college student participate in this program?
But, um, as I mentioned, if they walk them into school, it's just like if they're, sort of basketball team playing. They're not going to, okay, any person going to the, you know, field and, and they're gaining is meant for a basketball program. This is, this program is expanding and this is a program that we have. We have this program for years, we have this partnership for years, they're just expanding the usage of, um, some of these people here.
But what I'm saying is, we eliminated our program in order for them to, to enlarge in their program. Do they now go around our community and our schools and advertise that they're providing this for our students? Are our stu, are our students being notified that they have access to this?
I would assume that the high school clubs, players are mad where students can sign up for different programming, the marketing tools and the theater that they play out will move, will be due to participants. I can't, because I'm sure that's uncommon at the high school level.
Well, I used to enjoy sailing and kayaking and I wish I could still do that. And I wish our city, with all the resources that we have, could provide those services for the residents of Perth Amboy. But I'm glad some outside agency is coming to provide some menial programming for us at the same time being able to utilize our space for a lot of outside children also. I, I'm pretty sure that not all of the children participated in this program of Perth Amboy children. But I'm, I'm glad that we're kind of allowing another entity to take on our responsibilities.
Thank you, Ms. Roman. R seventy-seven two twenty-four authorizing contract with CME Associates for professional services for basketball court improvements at Patent Center Park and Columbus Circle Park in an, um, in the, an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. R seventy-eight two twenty-four authorizing a city, authorizing the city to accept an award from the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for the twenty twenty-four recreation opportunities for individuals with disability grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. R seventy-nine two twenty-four accepting a grant from Middlesex County through the Arts Institute of Middlesex County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three arts grant in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars. R eighty-two twenty-four authorizing an agreement with the Hopland Youth Organization, Inc. for the organization and operation of our recreational youth basketball, baseball and soft, softball program for the twenty twenty-four season.
Madam President.
Yes.
Ms. Roman? Uh, I'm, well, you're gonna be the one, you could answer this, I don't know. Why, why are we, why are we in an agreement with Hopland?
Um, just to mention, there is no exchange of any monies. I believe that in the past, um, we're gonna, this organization has provided the service to supplement, um, staffing for staffing purposes because obviously staffing is limited. If we have an entity that is able to provide the resources at no cost to the city, um, without faulting because this is for travel purposes, this is travel sports. We provide regular sporting events, but when it's travel, you're putting staffing limitations that we just may not have in place. So they're providing the service, uh, for us without any exchange of physical funding.
Is this the first time we're doing this or has this been like a regular thing?
This is the first official time that they, that we're putting it here.
I mean, I know a lot of our, our, our kids play in the Hopland organization. All right, I, I was just very curious about it. I mean, there's no money or nothing involved in this, it's just an agreement.
Correct.
Well, the, the coaches are all volunteers anyway. All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Roman.
I, I just find this, um, hearing now that, um, about the traveling teams that we partner with, with other municipalities. I remember about, was about a year ago that we were asked, the council was asked to allow for the traveling teams for parents to be able to use city vehicles for, to take the children to and from these, traveling to these events. I was wondering if a parent from Hopland would have had access to this because we, we were never informed that there were other municipalities involved, that we had partnerships with these other municipalities that might have had access to some of these vehicles because we're saying we're having staffing problem. Um, uh, do, do we allow the parents now to, right?
No, because I believe that the council was in-
It didn't go through, right?
Right, the council wasn't in agreement with that.
That might have been, well, very responsible thing we've done.
Yeah, because at that time, uh, I asked, um, Kenny, um, about where that was and he told me that they, they decided not to do that.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, and while you're there, quick question in regards to R seventy-nine accepting a grant for the Arts Institute? What is the plan for that? If you could just elaborate a little bit.
So that would be to help pay for entertainment for our Fourth of July, uh, programs.
As, uh, the liaison of the Arts Council, um, I think that money could be allocated for better programming. You hear mostly everyone talk about murals, um, maybe we should, uh, try to revitalize, revitalize our downtown district by improving the aesthetics and really trying to get some murals going. I'm glad that we're investing back into this program and taking whatever resources to make this one program happen. But it'd be great to spread out those resources, this way we can have long-term use of those funds and really see, and really see long-term impact of the use of those funds. It's a shame that as long as I've been involved in the arts, that we only have a handful of murals. And we should have more.
Is the Arts Festival part of that?
The Arts Festival, I, I, it's a whole different entity. We haven't had the Arts Festival in some time. Um, there was a lot of logistics with the Arts Festival, very, very heavy-duty, time-consuming. Um, although we did seek, um, funding support from some of our local businesses, you know, we find ourselves that in order to put a program together like that, there's a lot of funding that we need to bring to the table. And so it's much, much difficult to fundraise, um, or to, you know, go out, you know, after sponsorship to help support or offset, you know, funding and be mindful of municipal dollars, we have to be able to be careful in, you know, what is, you know, of utmost importance. And obviously, everything is important, but, um, it's not, this is a way to still include arts within programming that we do. And we do other, other programming, including the arts throughout, you know, the entire year, whether it be with the, you know, the galleries, uh, different initiatives within youth programming. So there's other programs, it's not like, you know, we sporadically, there's a lot of intentional programs focused on the arts, specifically during the summer when we have, you know, weeks-long of summer camps, um, art camping, you know, of all different, um, natures to be able to expand, whether it's music or painting or ceramics, um, we do, we've been working with the arts for many, many years.
I would like to comment on the Arts Festival because I was a part of the inception of the Arts Festival here in town. And the importance of boards, commissions and volunteers. Volunteers are one of the greatest assets a community has. And the first arts camp, the first Arts Festival was mainly done by volunteers and by the Arts Council. And this is something that could really offset a lot of the expense of the municipality and it could really expand on programming. Once you have a group of volunteers that are willing to dedicate their time and energy to making programs successful in this city, especially with the arts, a lot of times this type of promoting of the arts is so, is one of the most thankless jobs that they could be. So to have volunteers willing to do this and then having a lot of it taken away from them, to be created something else. And here we are now, we don't have the volunteers anymore to run this program. Now it drilled to a size that it can no longer be contained. Now lo, no longer are we providing now this program that we did. This is a lesson that we should learn about maintaining, retaining and encouraging and promoting with volunteers and boards and not cutting out certain boards within the city because this way you could grow certain programings without having to grow the budget. Because these volunteers did a lot of the work for free and they can make these programs successful if you include these volunteers and these residents.
Well, as the former volunteer president of the Arts Council, I can relate to what you're saying. Thank you, okay?
Thank you. R eighty-one two twenty-four authorizing change order number four to the contract with, with Suburban Consulting Engineers, Inc. for survey, design, permitting and construction support services related to the Veterans Memorial Youth League complex in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars with fifty cents, which is being funded through grant funds. R eighty-two two twenty-four introduction to the calendar year twenty-four municipal budget.
I have a question. Is there an increase?
When you say increase, I assume you're talking about tax increase?
Budget, yes.
Uh, no, there is not a tax increase.
No, no, budget increase. Because we might not see the tax increase this year, but if we increase the budget, we might have to make up for it later on. Is there a budget increase?
Well, the budget this year is ninety-two million dollars.
And last year it was?
Last year, um, as, I'll say the exact numbers, I can have the expenses. As adopted, it was ninety-two million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-six cents. This year, the estimate is ninety-two million, um, one hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and twenty cents. So, let's go to the budget now. Um, introduction of the twenty twenty-four Perth Amboy Municipal Budget. And everyone can see this and now we can go to the next slide. And to your question, oh. I guess I have to go through a little, uh, okay. So a summary of the, this year's budget. Um, as we look at it and where it stands today, we have an increase, to your point, sir. And what is that major increase that we see? Fortune, unfortunately, um, we have to give raises at this time. Let me just talk about that because we all know we were going through, um, we were coming out of COVID and we saw an inflation spike. Um, I know we were talking about that federally, we were talking about that within the state and we'll talk about that locally. So the unions came here and we saw, and again, they work hard. The employees here throughout the city toil, toil for us daily. And they deserved an increase for their salaries. Maybe not to the level that they requested because some of them requested whether it was seven percent, ten percent, maybe even twelve percent, maybe that, maybe we couldn't afford that, but they did deserve an increase. So we'll go into that. But the increase overall for municipal wages was about seven percent. I'll say this again, fortunately, unfortunately, there was also an increase with pension costs. So the employees here, all of us that work here within the city, our retired employees, there are pension costs associated with us and that saw an increase. Another increase I have to speak about is liability costs. We've, I'm sure we've seen this at home, there are increases with, with regards to our insurance and that, fortune, unfortunately, does hit municipalities as well.
I don't, I might forget something since we're gonna go through the whole thing. So the first seven percent increase of municipal wages. You started off a narrative of having negotiations with the unions and how you're kind of putting this narrative out that this is, has to do everything with our union workers. What is the percentage of directors or more executive workers that receive raises? What is the percentage of the average wage of a director who is not a non-union worker and is not, you know, beholden to a lot of the same rules?
I can work that out because I do have the numbers and, um, I can give, again, that was through the salary ordinance, the directors went from-
That would be more generous because this picture right here, that we're painting of the increase kind of lumps everyone together but puts a lot of the blame on the union workers. So I would like to see the separation.
There is no blame at all. I said that, I said the employees were-
Increase is and it's because we, you know, they deserve, but they wanted ten or more or we kept them down, we, you know, fought hard. Well, how about the ones who didn't need to fight? The directors who went in there and got what they wanted? What is the difference now? What is the percentage of the increase for the directors as opposed to the workers? I would like to see that separation.
We'll do it, I can definitely provide in the future. Um, and then the most important thing I do have to state, and that's the last item there, icon, A-plus. Because there was a lot of talk about the credit rating for the municipality. And we were just rated by Standard and Poor's this month and the credit rating is A-plus, stable. So I have to put the fact and not the- So I have to put the fact and not the fiction out. But we can go to the next slide.
I've said time to say no municipal tax rate, but we did have a water and sewage rate increase.
There was a, you are correct. There was a water and sewer increase, and that was to fund, as we all know. The administration at the time and the council could have kicked the can down the road as previous administrations have in the past. Even though there are more stringent water quality tests coming out every day or guidelines being promulgated by the state and the federal government. We could have just said, hey, because a lot of us, I have to admit, including myself, we say, hey, we don't really care. We just want to flush the toilet and it works, right? Or, but we don't really care until we have to get that drinking. We have to get that cup of water. And that's what we want to say. Our child has to get that cup of water. And we want to make sure that it meets and really exceeds the water quality standards. And I have to thank the council. I have to thank the mayor on behalf of the residents really to say, hey, no, we're not gonna kick the can down the road anymore. We have to make sure that we adhere to the water quality standards and really exceed them. So that was important. So, yes, sir. But the city's financial rating, once again, it's A-plus. And now we have to say, okay, we have this piece of pie. Where is the money going to within this budget? Okay? And the largest portion of our budget is public safety. Just, it is. So police and fire take twenty-nine percent of our current budget. After that, we were just talking about insurance costs, right? So our insurance costs are nineteen percent of this ninety-two million dollar budget. And then you'll see the next biggest part of that pie is what I talked about, our employees here. We have pension costs. So each employee does contribute to the pension, to their pension. But also, we as taxpayers also have to provide for that as well. So we, that's the other part of the pie. And then you'll see debt service for capital programs, public works to a lesser extent. And you see, we were just going through a lot with parks and recreation. You see how small that is? It's only one point seven million dollars. So you wonder when we were talking about, hey, we want the sailing program and all the things going on. How does that really occur? It's mainly through the work of the Office of Economic and Community Development and other funding agencies go out there and solicit grants on our behalf. Because you can see how little each of the other departments there, how much money is allocated to them. So grants play an important role in this.
I think it's.
I'm sorry.
The amount of money we spent on health and welfare of our residents is shameful compared to everything else, especially when it comes to public safety. Maybe if we invested more in the health of our residents, it would offset some of those other costs in the long run if we invested in that in the forefront.
Right.
A million dollars we're investing in the health of our residents, some of the poorest residents in this district. And that's where we invest in the health of our residents, especially coming out of COVID. It's a shame.
And to his point, the health and safety of our residents, first of all, I know safety is a big part of that. Like we see that talked about not only in the state, but out the nation. So public safety is a big part of that, and that's why you see that investment there. But to his second point, hey, Michael, you should be, and the mayor and the council, we should be spending more on Department Health and Human Services. And that's what we were talking about. It's very important when we talk about the Office of Economic Community Development and other entities go out there and solicit as many grants as possible. So last year, we solicited, we were not like approximately five million dollars. And now we have to really meet and definitely try to exceed that because grants are so important. Because unfortunately, we can't keep coming out of our pockets as residents, right? So we want to make sure that we can get the grants. I know it's still taxpayer money, but guess what? At least it's federal money and state money and that Perth Amboy resident money. Investing in our workforce. So again, we were talking about the unions. It was a part of that. Again, we see here, we had, it's a four-year agreement, just so you know, when we sit down and speak with each one of the unions, whether it's the Teamsters or whether it's Ask Me. And again, they do deserve it. In all means, when they came in and say, hey, we need a raise because we all saw those inflationary pressures that were providing that to all, not only to us, but to all of the employees. So some of them did come in and request, whether it's four or six or whatever. But luckily, we were able to come to a happy medium and come to the two, two, two and a half and two and a half throughout the term of the contract.
Since we're putting the burden on the union workers, what is the percentage of the raise for the non-union workers? The directors, the executive administration?
And I have that.
Was there an increase and how much are there increases?
And I will definitely, we can go into executive, I can provide that of everyone that got the raise. And I can also give it too. I can give it to.
We're showing the numbers. We're showing the numbers for the municipal workers. We should have the numbers of those workers also so we can tell the public exactly what's going on.
And to your point, we, as you know, you can, this is just the introduction, then it becomes the council's budget. And at those subsequent hearings, we can provide this as well.
But you're controlling the narrative. You're only showing one side. You're not showing everything. I'm asking for the other side.
Well, if you remember, sir, we went through this when we had the ordinance, the salary ordinance. And we had, again, for two readings with public comment as well, where we had the directors delineated there. And I, hopefully, we can all remember that. And each of the directors were listed and their salaries and increases were there. And that was for two readings. But however, we will show it again.
We did the two readings for this also.
This is just, this is the first thing we're talking about the budgets, right? Unless I'm wrong, this is the first time we're talking about the budget. Okay. I just want to be sure we're all clear with this and being a board. So again, we will provide this as well. Sorry. Balancing requests and fiscal responsibility. So again, the requests that we were just talking about and making sure, because we have fiduciary responsibility to all the residents as well. So that's the one thing that we tried to do even throughout these negotiations. And again, still noticing we have a commitment to our workforce and again, their families. Because it's not just the workers that are employed here because they are here within our town and residents, but their families as well.
I think this is very anti-union rhetoric when you put up there despite unions' request for higher, for higher raises. Everyone requests for higher raises. And to put that wording in there is very anti-labor, I believe. And I know we don't have a lot of union labor agreements, especially when it comes to our forwarding type of development. And I know we don't have really friendly relations going on. But this type of language right here points to type of a creation of animosity towards union workers. And I don't know why you keep on putting things like despite union request for higher raises or that the unions wanted X amount, but we got them down to this amount. And why are you putting that type of language in here?
And so fortunately, you feel that's, there was animosity there. There's no animus at all. It's just stating the facts. And again, they came in, each person, you know, they wanted to do, and like I said, they deserve it. Unfortunately, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents. The next one as well.
Especially since some of the letters were received from some of these union leaders.
Okay. Pension costs, that's what we talked about again. And the cost for every employee, whether it's the unions, whether it's the management, anyone that's working for the city, there are related pension costs. And again, so the pension, fortunately or unfortunately, increase for all of us. So for, on the employee side, when I say employee, police and fire have a different pension, just so you know. So the regular employees, our pension increased costs on the city municipal side went up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars over that. And then for police and fire, the cost, believe it or not, increased two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's something unfortunate that happens every year. There's always increased pension costs. So that's something we have to plan for. So again, we have to realize that, I just said, planning for that and how do we do that? It's looking at, you can go to the next slide while I talk about this. It's just looking for economic opportunity to see how we can defray the cost to the taxpayer, realizing that there's going to be increase in liability costs, increase in pension costs, and increase in salary costs. So you do that by looking at different opportunities, whether it's agreements that you have with development and trying to look for development opportunities throughout the city. Looking at ways, as the council was saying as well, to defray costs. Whether we were talking about with volunteers and more importantly, if you create these special improvement districts that can handle some of the municipal burden, so you don't have to hire as many employees. Those are things you have to look at. And it's a balancing act, a careful balancing act. Because again, we realize you don't want to necessarily pay higher taxes, but we realize we have to also serve you as well. So that's what we look at. Managing increased liability costs effectively, again, because insurance goes up, I'm sure you see it at home. Your car insurance goes up. It goes up for municipalities as well. And here we've seen an increase in liability costs of over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so how do you try and defray that as well? You try to train your employees to do things in maybe a different way. Because whether it's car accidents, that's one thing to look at. And indicators to make sure that they're performing as well and up to the standards that you have set. But fortunately or unfortunately, that's another thing that happens every year that increases. And that's why sometimes you'll see your tax burden increase. I think I should play music while I'm. Okay, sorry.
When I ran for council, I ran under the banner of change. What new industry are we trying to, put a better word, cultivate here in our community in Perth Amboy that's going to offset some of these increases that you're projecting in the future? That's, we're definitely going to have increases. Tax base goes up only incrementally. Is there anything progressive? Is there any change to our economy that might offset some of this cost or the burden doesn't fall squarely on the shoulders of the residents here in Perth Amboy? Has the administration been proactive in trying to court any type of new industry or businesses that's going to enhance the lives and provide job opportunities to our residents? Has there been anything in the last couple of years since the new administration has taken over?
Well, I think what you've seen is, and again, that's an important point because we want to make sure that that burden doesn't fall squarely on the soldiers of, on the shoulders of our residents. So how do we do that? It's looking at economic opportunity and what's available to us. So looking at the projects that are out there, you have Eport Two opening up. You have the Gateway as well, that project to see what opportunities that, when I say gateway, when you first drive in, there's the underdeveloped and that will soon be developed property and opportunity there, whether it's warehouses. Again, that creates opportunity as well because it's economic viability projects. It's residential projects, as we were, we have to thank the council as well for that when you think about Sayar Avenue. Because that's bringing additional residents in as well. And that spurs economic opportunity for individuals to go to stores and buy products and shop here. So those are the kind of projects that we have to look at. And then seeing, like we said as well, what can we do to say, hey? I think someone brought it up here, one of the council members. Hey, there's opportunities that we can do with volunteers. But not everybody wants to volunteer, right? Because we all have jobs at home too. Don't tell them about more work. So if we create different vehicles, and I'll give you an example, a special improvement district. Maybe if we do that and we can have those opportunities so we don't hire municipal employees. We have this different entity have those opportunities so we can maybe hire residents to work here and it's not putting a tax burden on the city. Those are the kind of things we have to think outside the box, provide that opportunity for us so we can defray that cost. Those are things we have to look at.
So we're celebrating warehouse employment. As the warehouses built up in town, so did all of the temp agencies in town. You can see them everywhere. These jobs do not provide a living wage, so the burden now falls upon the municipality. This is not really creating economic opportunity. This is, this is the opposite. This is maintaining that there would be no economic growth. That you're, this will maintain that our class would not rise out of our class because of the jobs that are now surrounding us do not provide a living wage and would just keep people constantly struggling down. There has been no negotiations to make sure that there are union labor or within the, within the, these warehouses in the future. Or has there's been really any oversight on the practices of the labor in these warehouses? To tote warehouses as something as a great, you know, accomplishment, it's, it's, it's shame.
I don't know if it's a shame. I know it's economic opportunity. I don't know what their, are the salaries that they give there. I'm not sure.
The pollution, the, the quality of life, the COs, the type of pollution they're putting, the burden on our community and then using us as cheap labor and not providing a living wage. It is a shame that we're saying that this is something to celebrate.
Since I don't know what the wage is, I don't really want to speak about that right now. I have to see what they are providing salary-wise. But one other thing I did neglect to say, and I know we can all be proud about this. Where Perth Amboy is currently situated, there is an current opportunity, and we're exploring that right now. You're talking about thinking outside the box, and I thank you for that. It's saying, hey, we're hearing about green, everybody going, going green and climate change. Well, I'm sure everyone heard about the offshore windmills that are out there. So we're currently contemplating agreements with those entities that are setting up that. So when they come and run their underground wiring, Perth Amboy is perfectly situated to take advantage of that and create some revenue when they bring that in and land and harness that here within Perth Amboy. So those are the kind of things we have to think about. And no person, one individual is an island. So we can all start to think about that and say, hey, did we think about this? Think about different opportunities to defray those costs like the councilman is saying. So, yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Torres.
Now, to say even that, I hope they're employing the people here from Perth Amboy because it still sounds like no real economic opportunity for our youth coming out of high school to receive a living wage here in Perth Amboy. But, great.
May I?
Sorry.
All right. We'll start with what you just said about the.
Harnessing.
The windmills out in the water. I mean, I, I guess that would mean a staging area along the water somewhere. All our, everything along the water is taken right now. Where would they start? Where would they go?
And that's being run by state.
Buckeyes there, buckeyes there, the warehouses are there. Where would, where would there be a state? First of all, it's a pipe dream. Because that's, that's, that, that may happen, it may not happen. You know, but what about finance, fiscal responsibility? We keep adding to our workforce constantly. You know, in the last two years, I would like to know by the next council meeting, how many people we've added to our workforce? Now, since I've been standing up, I'm sitting up here, I've heard two things over the last couple of months. And then tonight you touched on them. You know, inflation and this and that. We've had the tow truck guys come in here and ask for a raise, and there's no movement on that. Hold, hold on. There's a lot of play behind the scenes on that, but there's no movement on that, right? And, and, and the president is doing the best she can to put it together. But my point is, but there are people out there that don't want to give it to them. But that isn't really the issue. It's about our budget. The other thing, and I sat up here, is you know, our directors, they gotta make six figures because in the other towns, they make six figures. Well, our, I'll, I'll use the police and the firefighters as a good example. Or even the public DPW. Other towns make more money than our DPW guys make, our police officers make, our firefighters make. So I mean, that argument, whatever happened to get by with less? Fiscal responsibility, we spend more than we take in. And you can't depend on grants all the time because grants dry up. Sometimes they're one-shot deals. You know, and, and no offense to the police and the fire, but all those new cops and firefighters that are being added to the budget because of the grant, we're gonna have to absorb them into our budget three years from now. Where's that money gonna come from? I know where it's gonna come from. It's gonna come from seven thirty-seven Lincoln Drive. It's gonna come from the peoples who live in the houses. You know, we hear about grants and we're paying people that get grants for us, and we got pilots and we're giving away the farm. And we hear about pension costs. Well, pension costs are rising because we're hiring more people. When are we gonna stop this? You know, it's all well and good. So, you know, we're gonna hear the rest of this. To me, it's like, I haven't heard us once in the year that I've sat here try to cut money. I've only heard us try to add money. So, you know, and there's no offense against the directors because I'm sure I'm gonna get a phone call about, you know, I'm picking on the directors. But that was a. But that was not a valid argument. It wasn't a valid argument that they needed to make six figures. You know, they, they signed up for the job here, they knew what they, they were getting. Just like the police officers and the firefighters and the public workers, right? They know how much money you're going to get. We shouldn't favor one group over another. If we're rewarding people, right, on one end, and it's an argument that I've heard from Mr. Torres here, and then we single out the union people as, oh, they're terrible because they're always asking for something. They're asking for a livable wage. That's what they're asking for. And we can't be sustained on all this other stuff. So, I, I'm sorry, Madam President, it's just that I'm listening and listening. And to me is that we just keep adding and adding and adding. And now, our budget is bigger than it was last year.
It was. But it, it's a little bit less than last year. But what I'm going to do is, the last two years, how many?
You went through the 16 mil. You went through that 16 COVID mil, so remember that 16 mil was added on. When the, when this administration took over, this budget increased by almost 10 million under this administration. So let's be real about everything. The numbers you've been able to keep nice and balanced because a lot of grant money has been coming in because of COVID. But that money's ran out. Now, how are we going to make up for it in the future? So let's not try to like water anything down. This is, this is the reality of it. And by the time the increase comes, most likely you won't be sitting here. And all the taxpayers are going to have to pick up the burden, and that's the truth.
But to your question, I'll make sure I have the last two years, how many new employees were hired for the next, so we have that. We could go to, because that was grants, which we'd spoken about.
Those, those COVID monies were misappropriated.
So, before I go into, I want to make sure, I'm going to give you the listing of the directors and a different salary change and a percentage. I'm going to give you the last, how many, in the last two years, how many new employees were hired. And again, we, when we look at the budget, we have to say, again, it was, to the point, it was the $92 million budget. But the most important thing I want to say, even though we have these increased costs, to me, is the rating of the credit agency of all that up there. And because I believe there was some discussion that it was downgraded, and that's just incorrect. So we have to talk about the truth. The truth is, it's A-plus and it's stable. But to your point, I do have to provide that information. I will, because again, this is just the introduction. There'll be more times made for questions, but I will provide it by the next meeting, if not by tomorrow, and email it and you can, so because it's open, everyone can have it as well. What those salaries were and then how many new employees over the previous two years.
Right. What is the percentage? Because we put the percentage.
Yeah, I'll give you the exact salaries and then I'll calculate, so you can have it too, and then I'll try and put it in the percentage, so you can look at it.
Because I'm pretty sure.
I'll make sure you email too. Oh, that's it, thank you. Okay, yes, that's.
Is that it?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Now, this A-plus is so we could borrow at a great rate, right?
Yes, sir.
How much did we borrow this year?
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Just yesterday, we took bids on $10.8 million of capital project funding, which included $440,000 for the parking utility. We had 12 bidders. Our overall interest cost was 2.86%. 12 bidders was unprecedented for the city of Perth Amboy. And just as a comparative, within the last few days, a board of education in Perth, in Pennsylvania issued almost the same amount of debt. And they're AAA rated and their percentage was 2.48.
And, and with the water infrastructure project, the totality of that also, the borrowing is going to be, we're talking over $300 million that we borrowed this year. That's what I'm trying to get to.
We have not borrowed the funds. We've authorized the projects, that's all that's happened so far. And they're either going to be funded through the New Jersey I-Bank, which we generally go to them for financing when we have the ability ultimately to get principal forgiveness. And prior to that, generally, the loans are half market rate loan percentage, interest rates and half zero. So, you know, we do that purposely to take advantage of the principal forgiveness. And the rest of it, a very small portion of it would be financed by the city itself.
Is it a possibility that the policies or the funding of the I-Bank could change anytime in the future?
I guess so.
Yeah, anything's possible, sir.
Okay, so, it's not approved, but you know, it's possible that we could get reimbursed. But there's a possibility that we might not be reimbursed, so.
Yes. And it's, it's always possible it could be more than 50% because we just had one that was, I think it was almost 75% reimbursed. Uh, I'm sorry, 75% forgiven. So, and again, they have pretty stringent standards with regards to the projects that they're going to finance for towns like Perth Amboy. So, we have a lot of work to be done through DEP to get those projects approved.
Do we have a point?
And again, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make one other point, is that we're not going to issue the debt on that $250 million of approvals until absolutely necessary. So as we begin the projects, we have the authorization to start the planning, to start the development of the projects. And once we get to the point where we now need the cash to be able to finance the construction, that is when we will go out to the market and not before that.
Do we have a point person looking out for our interests with this? And you know, as a possible liaison with the DEP to make sure that we're able to get everything that we can?
Well, yes, we have several partners in that regard. So, the engineer for the water utility.
CDM, sir.
And as well, the engineer for the water utility, that's the operations manager, Mr. Perez Jimenez. They partner with DEP in that regard. And as well, we have our bond counsel, our financial advisor, who oversee on the financial side to make sure that we meet the requirements.
We should definitely have someone in-house, an expert in-house making sure, going over this. We should not rely on outside entities to protect our interests, to guarantee that we're going to be reimbursed these monies. This is extremely important, and we should not really, you know, just depend on other people. You know, it's easier to point the finger when someone else's, someone else messes up. But this is so important that we should have someone in-house overlooking this and making sure that we get every cent that's coming to us. I, I think it would be money well worth spending.
Thank you. R83-224 authorizing refund of tax overpayment tax sales certificate 23-00296 in the amount of $1,968 with 7 cents to WSFS Cost Tower DB 11 Trust for 794 Stephen Avenue Block 388, Lot 42. R84-224 authorizing refund of tax exempt fully disabled veteran refund overpayment in the amount of $1,466 with 36 cents to CoreLogic for 690 Franklin Drive, Block 397 dot 07, Lot 1.
Madam President, I just want to ask the VA something. You know, it says that we're giving a refund to a disabled veteran, a refund of overpayment, but it's to a company.
So that payment was made on, the company made in a mortgage, mortgager made on their behalf, so we have to repay them.
CoreLogic? I mean, is it a mortgage company or is it some kind of LLC?
Mortgage company. So we're paying it, as you know, if somebody's disabled veteran, they don't have to pay taxes at all. I said, as you know.
I know that.
I said, as you knows.
R, R85-224 authorizing refund of subsequent tax overpayment tax sales certificate 22-00172 in the amount of $4.92 to LNY New York Inc. for 309 Lawrence Avenue Block 159, Lot 7 dot 02. 86-224 authorizing refund of tax overpayment in the amount of $15,350 with 66 cents to Costel Title Agency Inc. for 321 Maple Street, Block 120, Lot 9 dot 01. R87-224 authorizing connecting fee reimbursement in the amount of $64,147 to New Seaman Avenue Elementary School. R88-224 consenting to the transfer of rights and obligation under the Home Program Agreement with the Puerto Rican Association for Human Development. R89-224 directing the planning board to investigate whether the property is commonly known on the city's tax map as Block 11, Lot 1 dot 07, Block 16, Lot 15, and 15 dot 01, Block 17, Lots 1 dash 8, and 46 dash 64, Block 35, Lots 444, sorry, 44 dash 52, 53 dot 01, 53 dot 02, and 54 dash 62, Block 36, 36, Lot 1 dash 11, 12 dot 01, and 13 dash 15. And Block 42, Lots 25 dash 48, AKA certain properties on Market Street, 125 Second Street, 210 dash 224 Lewis Street, 96 dash 132 Second Street, 156 dash 190 Second Street, 147 dash 201 Second Street, 203 dash 223 Market Street, and 218 through 240 Second Street should be designated as an area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48, Column 12A dash 1. R90-224 authorizing the 2021 dash 2022 renewal of inactive plenary retail consumption license number 1216 dash 016 dash 005, held in the name of Amada Pina TA Latin Love Lounge at 460 State Street, effective non, non pro, tongue, July 1st, 2021.
Mr. Opal, do you mind elaborating on Resolution 89, which streets were removed, excluded? Just summarize some of the changes that might have been added here, please?
I don't have the exact ones that were changed, so going back. The council did approve a similar resolution sometime last year. This revises it to add certain lots and remove others. I don't have like the, the ones that were removed, the ones that aren't. I did include, all of the properties that are included in the study, their addresses are referenced in the resolution. And this is simply, these are properties that are along the Second Street corridor, near the train station that would just direct the planning board to study whether they meet the criteria. This does, this resolution doesn't do any kind of designation, it just authorizes the study. You know, the planner and engineer would conduct that study, they'd present it to the planning board, and they'd have to determine whether the statutory criteria would hit, would, would, the statutory criteria would be met through that planning board hearing. So, all this does is authorize that study. It'll, it would be up to the planner and engineer and the planning board to make the determination as to whether it meets the criteria. So this is just the first step in a rather long process.
Communications, we have some communications. Also, do we have personnel, closed session?
We do.
All right, I need a motion for a closed session resolution. R69-224 authorizing a closed session at the February 28, 2024 meeting to discuss personnel.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fuchil?
Yes.
Councilwoman Torres?
Yes.
Council President DeHater?
Yes.
We need to, oh, I'm sorry, before we start. Don't we need to add these, or do we, yeah, we should. We, we should add it now, right?
Or, well, you have.
Later on. On the, we don't have, I, I mean.
As far as, I just want to point out the, there are three positions on the zoning board. One of the positions that is vacant or due to an expiration is an alternate, number one. And normally, what the council does is move the alternate to a regular position if there is one available, and there is one available. So it happens to be Heidi Burke's alternate position that is up. So I don't know if the council wants to move her to the regular position.
Yeah, we, I, I feel comfortable doing that. You okay? Okay, so we're going to move her up and then there will be another position?
Well, that will leave two alternates, but we only got one person interested in applying, right?
In applying?
Yeah. Just one person answered the ad for the zoning board. Did you want to do these now or after open session?
Oh, after, okay. After closed session, right?
Okay. It's fine, yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Okay, public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're talking about employees' liability insurance. If this guy does something now while he's working, who's going to testify that it's a good, upstanding employee? And how is any body going to be able to justify this? Our lawyer sits there all the time, Stackhader did all his emails and everything, whatever he has to offer. So, that's a problem. Because nobody's listening to what's going on here, the citizens of this town. Talking about pension costs and everything else like, these employees that come to work every day and do their job. I'm sure you guys are involved in a 401K and getting pensions. So all city employees are getting it. We're giving money to contractors and everything else like that. So blaming, and you're right, blaming the union workers is bullshit. It's the problem here with white collar. How much money do they get? I asked this question last meeting. And this degree, you should have been prepared, for how much of those directors got raises besides the 2 and 3%. So don't sit here and say that it's the unions, the pensions, and everything else like that. They come to work, they're contracted. The pension costs are by the state of New Jersey, not set by the city and not set by the union. It's set by the state of New Jersey. And those contracts were made that way, right? So, whatever they pay is with the state. And the state who screwed up the pensions, the Jim McGreeves who wants to run back again, screwed the pension system. Hen, Kay, McCade, Kushner, and all those big shots. They're the ones that did this, when they were doing, and ruined the pension system. So don't sit here now and blame what they did with the pensions. They created the problem by not paying the money. And the unions are getting too, that's less than inflation, less than inflation. If I was. If I was here, I'd be sitting in arbitration, showing pictures of the city, of all these warehouses. Talking about pilots, zero money for, for school, zero money for school. And you negotiate a pilot, he negotiating pilots. So if you're not outstanding a pilot, out of pilots, of how much taxes you're gonna go up in those years, and how much money you're gonna need? Those pilots went to Home Depot, billionaires. Pardon me, here's a guy that pays for his kids to get in college. So these are the people we're taking care of. Everybody said, oh, the Democrats tax the rich. No, Democrats, you're giving the rich all the breaks, and you're doing Kushner now, too. So don't sit here and sit there and blame unions that go to work. Why were unions created? To help the simple man. White House, huh? Just go up to the mayor, make a donation, and you get a raise. You know, how many of those directors worked on the campaigns? And everybody else? This guy worked on the campaigns? Let me take care of it. This is what goes on, and this is the problem. Now let's go to R seventy-two. We're gonna pay a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars for somebody to do grants. Now she said there was three hundred people, all right, up to twenty-five thousand. Was that a hundred? You say everybody got twenty-five thousand, that's a hundred twenty people out of three hundred. So, we're gonna give them a hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars, and I guarantee this is probably some political company that works for somebody or is related to somebody. Why are we doing this? We're paying employees a lot of money to do a job. But no, contractors, contractors, how much are we paying this law firm? How much money? How much money are we paying this law firm, which we're supposed to have a five-day-a-week law firm that was packed? What happened? No, he comes along because he's a Democratic lawyer, oh, let's give him a job. Let him work on pilots. How much money, how much money in the pilots? How many more pilots are we doing? Do you know how many pilots right now are being negotiated?
There are probably, I can't give you the exact number of the five.
All right, so you don't know the exact number, how many pilots? What, do we got ten? We got five? We got six?
I don't want to quote and be wrong, so I think you'd rather check, like I do, I check.
We should have, because we got people here, we should know how many pilots are being done. So the council knows before it happens.
Thank you.
Not later on. And that's a problem here. You guys bump on you, you follow the pilots, and we raise houses.
Thank you.
Or water rates.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Who's gonna start the clock?
Yes.
Joseph Voss, three seventeen Rector Street. I'm gonna read because I know the people restrict on time, so I'll speak quickly and efficiently. I've been before this council on a number of occasions to ask, and ask for answers about criminal acts of Jose Espayat Lozano, a city employee, that occurred on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, where he assaulted a police officer. Despite detailing the conduct unbecoming of a city employee, this council has stonewalled all questions and refused to provide details to the public. The council has refused to discuss disciplinary action or lack thereof, discuss any special qualifications for his hiring, discuss the, the special treatment that he's being afforded that no other city employee has been, has been given. Moreover, the members of the city council have refused to detail the nature of Miss Lozano, Mr. Lozano's role in their political campaign regarding his role as a vote-by-mail harvester. I am sure that all the members are aware that while pending trial for his criminal assault on a police officer, Mr. Lozano had another run-in with law enforcement that was caught on camera. This incident happened about a month from the assault that involved Mr. Lozano causing property damage, acting belligerently, exposing himself in public, and defiling our streets when he urinated in public. Despite what is apparent on the camera, officers at the behest and the threat of the police director, Helman Kaba, our mayor, turned a blind eye and did not even give Lozano a careless driving ticket for rear-ending three cars or a sobriety test, sort of how the city is treating him as an employee, no repercussions for his actions. Since my words have not compelled you to answer questions about why nothing has been done with Mr. Lozano, maybe this daunting video of his actions or will, or maybe it's gonna take Mr. Lozano mowing down a child before you answer to the public. So I have two questions. What's it gonna take for you guys to do something about this? And then my final question, and it's directed through you to the, to the law director, is has his firm made any phone calls to the prosecutor of Highland Park to ask for reduced plea agreement or, or, or more favorable plea agreement for Mr. Espayat, and why?
I can answer the second question, no. No.
Anybody else?
I wanna address this a little bit because the burden keeps on being put on the council as if the council has not made any moves to address this. We have made countless moves to address this issue, but since we're talking about employees, a lot cannot be discussed here in public, and you know this. So our kind of hands are tied, but no, this matter has been addressed. And I'm gonna say, first off, the first incident, I commend Officer Cruz for his professionalism. The second incident, I can't see how that went down. Okay? Now, the burden is constantly being put on this council, and we know what form of government we have. That was a Faulkner form of government, where we have a strong mayor, and our mayor is not just a mayor, he is the police director, who sets all of the policies of the police force that the chief of police even needs to follow. I believe that our police director has zero experience in that role. And conversations I had beforehand, that that role was gonna go to someone of experience, and that did not happen. Okay? This has been addressed. We have addressed every element of it, even the handbook and everything that's gone on, even the element of that person going during working hours, for whatever reason, from his station on Olive Street to the clerk's office to harass another employee, the mother of a police officer. Now, I didn't understand that, and all of these issues have been addressed.
Anybody?
Now, the one you wanna question is the police director. He is the one who sets the policy, he is the one who could fix this tomorrow, he could change all of this. That is the person who is in charge, the mayor.
Anybody else?
Del Tofic, three forty-one, Colfax Street. Anybody wants to guess why I'm here? Hold on. All right.
It's ti-
So.
No, I was gonna say, it's, it's time for us to advocate, and this should have been, happened, so I agree.
Okay, so, if, if I was having a baby, the baby would have been born already, been nine months, nothing happened. Everybody sits here and talks about city employees, seven percent increase, cost of living increase, Mr. Green advocates for it. I don't know, I didn't know rising increases were like really like a sign, rocket scientist. It's very simple, actually. I gave all you guys, I did the homework for the B A, I did the homework for the city attorney, I gave you all the towns that you could possibly ask for. But yet, we have people behind the scenes that are being weasels and they're trying to pull away your minds and your thoughts. We have a chief of police who makes, I don't know, maybe like two eighty a year, who just got a tremendous raise. We have a sergeant in traffic who makes, I don't know, maybe like one sixty a year without overtime, dedicates how much money we're gonna make, how much we're gonna feed our family. Like Mr. Green said, hey, us too, we have families, we have families to support, we have houses, we have households, we have kids that needs to eat, we have expenses, we have trucks that cost a lot of money. You guys keep bringing redevelopment up, guess what? All these new houses are coming in, it's gonna be average three, four cars per household. All these new companies coming in, guess what? You got trucks coming in. Matter of time for trucks catch on fire, matter of time for they get into accidents, who's gonna clean up that mess? Our cost of living is unreal, our equipment prices unreal, and it's really simple, I mean, we need an increase, it's quite simple. But we can't have people who are making very great money of our taxpayers dedicate how much we're not gonna make. We can't afford to do the service, we cannot, it's been years, you guys giving, you're approving millions of dollars every year, millions and millions of dollars, on every taxpayer's expense. What we asking for affects less than three percent of city residents, less than three. We really need that money, and I'm not sure how long it's gonna take, it's been nine months already. And again, I did all the homework, I gave you guys everything you wanted, all the towns, all the towns. Simple, let's go state police rates, very simple. State police have the best of the best, studying hard, hard, with college degrees, that just to do this. They didn't have people that are not even involved in anything, just because they get in their car towed all the time, now they call in complaining. Well, guess what? Gentlemen, move your car. If there's a problem with street alternate, move your car, simple. Less than five percent of the residents per Thamway gets affected, less than five. We gotta move on this, and every time we come, it's put on, take off, put on, take off, like, why can't we just have a meeting like we used to? Every year, we sit down all together and have a meeting and discuss the concerns. Now, no, now it's like, F you, just because you want it, I'm not giving it to you, but unless somebody else asks for it, maybe we'll get it. I mean, how long is this gonna keep going on? We just, we gotta move on this already, it's like, it's crazy. I give you guys, somebody complained about Woodbridge, I'm glad they complained about Woodbridge, and I'm glad they said Woodbridge is a lot lower than us. Guess what? Nowhere near lower than us, they're like double us. Just, I don't know if you guys took the time to read the ordinance that I submitted or the complaints that I submitted. I emailed you guys, and ca, and residents know about it. How's that possible? How? Without even doing an Oprah request? Where's the leak? Somewhere. Somewhere here, there's a leak, but yet, nobody's moving our stuff. I'm good with that.
We, we, we should address this as soon as possible. It is a shame that this is going on for so long. And Adele, I commend you, your lobbying of the council is grade A, you should be the head of the B I D. You really, really support the interests of the business owners, and you've done it in such a professional way. There is no reason that we're holding this up. I know there's people behind the scenes who don't want this to go through, and keep on messing this up, okay? We shouldn't go, have this go any further. Next meeting, we should have something on that, we should even say, you can look at it all in the face while we vote yes or no, all down the line, and to see where each one of us stands.
All right, uh, 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 your time, your time, your time is up, but let me tell you, let me tell you, everybody keep talking about people behind the scene doing this, okay? Last, last time that we went to agenda prep, I gave information to every single one council member to look it over. I did not want it, any information from anybody else, I wanted to get my own information, I put it out in a spreadsheet for everybody to look at it, okay? We are working on it. It's not that I'm, first of all, I speak for myself, I will not allow anybody behind me to tell me what I have to vote for on this, not only this ordinance, but any ordinance. I have to do my homework, I, I did my part, and we have to discuss it. We cannot just come blindly and open an ordinance that not everybody is gonna be in agreement. I, I'd rather have that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, members of the council, specifically Madam President, and the state members of the council, good evening to all of you. Ken Gonzalez, currently resides at one-ten High Street. I'm actually, originally came here today because I was asked by a number of city residents to address item number two of the ordinance concerning exceeding the municipal budget. However, in all honesty, this afternoon, I called our clerk, she was very good with her time, I also had a good conversation with Jill, our CFO, and they addressed my issues to my satisfaction. On its face, it looked like there may be something unusual going on, but the explanation was given to me privately, and the explanation was given to the public this evening, I think was perfectly satisfactory, and in fact, Ms. Goldie reminded me that way back in the years when I was a councilman here, this went on as well. So I'm satisfied with that issue, so I want to thank the people that I addressed on that issue, and I also want to thank Councilman Puccio for raising the issue himself as a councilman, so thank you for that. I did, however, also want to speak about what I observed here as regards to the council meeting itself, big picture. So I'm gonna talk for a minute about inside baseball. I was a little bit uncomfortable watching this meeting, I think people in the audience were uncomfortable watching this meeting, I think some of members of the council are uncomfortable being in this meeting. Folks, we're supposed to be discussing the issues of the day in a way that's positive. Now, no disrespect to anyone here, Councilmember Torres, I have nothing but respect for you. You raised a lot of issues today that were important, and a lot of which I, not all of them, but a lot of them, I agree with a hundred percent. When you talked about the issue of warehouses coming to Port Amway, I'm a hundred percent with you, that's something we don't want. I remember when, yesterday or the day before, when they announced Woodbridge Center is being sold, the mayor of Woodbridge made a specific point, no, Woodbridge Center is not gonna become a warehouse, we don't want that, there's good reason for that, we don't, why should we be, why should Port Amway become the closet of Middlesex County, just warehouses, that's not what we should be about. However, with all due respect, some of your tone was so dripping in anger, it, some of the good points we were trying to make were lost, so I'm just constructive criticism, nothing more. Mr. Green, because I'm not gonna let anybody go completely on this, you came to make a thorough budget presentation, and I appreciate that, but quite frankly, the question that Mr. Tor, Councilman Torres asked you about what's the difference between the- the regular union members and the directors, I think was a legitimate question, I'm shocked that you didn't have the answer here to give today, because it left you and the directors in a weird situation. So, if the answer is, no, it's matched up directly, the same, then the directors are off the hook, and no one needs to look at them with cross eyes. If the answer is, yes, they got this much, then the administration needs to own up and say why it was fair, at least in your mind, and explain it. But by not answering the question, everybody here noticed, you didn't answer the question, and it looked bad for everybody. So, with all due respect, that's shocking. Um, Councilman Puccio, I'm just gonna comment on this, you and I served together for some time on the school board, and when you were a rookie, I used to see you get very angry and frustrated, today, you commend, I commend you, you handle yourself as a scholarly, subtle statesman, and I appreciate you, the questions you asked were appropriate, and you were in good regard, so I wanna compliment you. See, that's how we need to be, we need to compliment and give constructive criticism to everybody, because otherwise, we look like a bunch of people who are fighting, and that kinda stuff shows up in the newspapers, that kinda stuff is seen on public television by Woodbridge, and how does Perth Amway look? Bad. At the end of the day, folks, I'm not here to make anyone look bad or feel bad, I'm just trying to offer some constructive criticism of how we can be, all of us, better. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Next person?
Muy buenas noches. I'm sorry, excuse me, do you have the...
I do have a translator.
Tengo un traductor.
Muy buenas noches, mi nombre es María Peralta, y quiero que el intérprete escuche los cinco minutos míos y después que, que le explique lo que yo dije a usted para no perder tiempo.
Mr. Green is capturing her, maybe we should reset her time?
The thing is, she wants to finish her explanation in Spanish, and then have somebody translate.
But that's what that's for.
Yeah, but is that gonna hold off?
Not the whole thing.
It's not gonna wait until she's done, so I don't think...
But she has to do it the way that we have the technology.
Right. You're gonna, go ahead. Stop the time, she hasn't started yet. Thank you. Okay. Yo mejor prefiero a Junior que me interprete. She'd rather have him interpret, so she's gonna say all her speech, and then she's gonna have some, Mr. Iglesias. Sorry.
Mi nombre es María Peralta, vivo en Estate Street, por 40 años, 40 años y pico. Estoy aquí esta noche para denunciar una agresión verbal de un trabajador de la ciudad. El domingo en la noche... Okay, el domingo en la noche, en la tarde, estabano celebrando el instamiento de nuestra bandera dominicana, donde el señor Miguel Arrocho, el cual respeto mucho porque ha sido un hombre muy respetuoso conmigo, pero el domingo, él subió a la tarima nuestra sin permiso de la organización United Dominican. Él anunció que nosotros iban a celebrar en los tres brother, en el 555 Penn Street, nuestra celebración como todos los años, nos trasladamos a diferentes lugares a celebrar. Es un evento público anunciado públicamente. Yo me fui a la iglesia y después regresé para los tres brothers. Cuando yo llegué, tenía poco tiempo, yo encargué una comida porque pregunté si había comida paga por la organización, me dijeron que no. Yo pagué mi comida, tenía poco minuto, cuando el señor Arrocho se presentó, yo soy el vicealcalde, yo soy el vicealcalde, estaba muy tomado, estaba muy tomado, presentó los candidatos de Jaime Cava, mi prima, que ella es mi prima, que la quiero mucho, me alegro mucho que ella va a correr para concejal, y esto no es contra ella, es contra la agresión tan grave que él me hizo. Cuando él se paró y lo anunció, yo me pare porque habían más candidato, y creo que un lugar público, y no podíamos todos anunciar. Él salió corriendo, prohibió que yo hablara, que yo me anunciara como candidato, porque él dijo que eso era un evento de él, privado de él, donde es de nosotros los dominicanos, no tengo nada en contra de la comunidad puertorriqueña. Pero el acoso que me hizo fue muy grande, él estaba, estaba como loco corriendo, haciéndome pasar este vergüenza. Yo fui, hablé con las dueñas del negocio, él viene corriendo, él entró aquí, alante de mí, me retiré para que no me tumbara. Él me vocio y me dijo, tú no vas a hablar, tú no vas a hablar, y tú no vas a hablar, porque este evento es mío, es mío privado. Ahora yo quiero saber, por qué tanta agresión con los trabajadores de la ciudad contra nosotros, contra nosotros los residentes. Solamente porque si no apoyamos la campaña que le da la gana, al fin de, de la administración, ya todo el mundo nos cae encima, de una forma u otra, no podemos estar en un lugar donde, donde este la administración ya está con su grupo. Esto es un abuso ya, esto es un abuso que hay aquí en nuestro pueblo. En vez de estar pensando ayudar a sacar los niños de la calle, que están en drogas, que están en peligro, bicicleta, de noche corriendo, pensando en agredirme a mí que soy una mujer. Prohibiendo un lugar público donde yo estoy celebrando mi día, entiende? Yo no entiendo, yo, yo, estamos, con esta administración estamos este como loco, como, es algo increíble, esto nunca se había visto en nuestro pueblo. Ninguna administración, ustedes me perdonan, les respeto mucho, pero los concejales están para defender nuestro pueblo, con mucho respeto que somos mujeres serias, hombres serios los que están todos ahí sentados. Un concejal es para nada menos decir yes, yes, a todo lo que la alcalde le pida. Nosotros necesitamos que ustedes nos protejan. Yo fui a la policía, que quiero que el jefe policía se me pare aquí, porque yo fui a poner un, un complaint, no una querella. Y se me llegó cogerme el complaint. ¿Pueden darme dos minutos más?
No, no damos más, más tiempo, solo es cinco minutos. It's only five, she's asking for more time, and we only give five minutes. So, now, Mr. Iglesias, can you translate for the rest?
Absolutely, I'll do the best I can. Yeah, I do love the best I can to do the translation. So, um, this event took place on Sunday night, after the Dominican flat racing ceremony. Um, there was an after event celebration at 555 Penn Street, where a group of people gathered to celebrate. And there, um, there was Miguel Arrocho, a city employee, which was drinking, and I wanted to speak in the microphone, he didn't allow me the opportunity to speak, he said that he owned the event, and because of that, I couldn't speak, he verbally assaulted me, this is abusive. Um, the city councils are here to defend the people. And I went to the police department to make a police complaint, and that's basically what I got from what she stated.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Corkowski, all car towing and recovery. We towed for the city of Perth Amway for at least 25 years. Uh, we, we need a, we need an increase of the towing, we run in trucks, the trucks are $180,000. I used to do front brakes on one truck, it was $2,400, just for parts, on a new Hino. Of course, a lot of money fueling the trucks, $400, $400 to fill up the truck. We're running, we're running here quick enough to get, you know, tow these vehicles for the police departments, and they go back on the road to do their jobs very quick, so we're serving the community and the police department. But right now, the rates were getting, we can't even afford to hire, I mean, night drivers are frying, they don't want the overtime, of course, they're not getting paid enough, and other towns are more money, they're just going to other towns. So, you know, it's a little tough, we had no complaints in 25 years, we're very nice to customers, especially towing $80,000, $100,000 car. We got cameras on the truck, of course, there's so much, so much just for the cameras, then if anybody said we damaged, we could show, we didn't damage nothing. But in winter time, we're here for all the snow removals, we got the plow trucks going properly, I mean, plow trucks are $200,000 now, so when you have us remove the snow, we have the trucks to clear out, and the plow trucks get in and out, plus you're paying the guy $75 an hour. We, we only get three, four toes with three guys out there sometimes when it snows, because we have to go around and around with, with extra guys. But right now, the money we got, we need to go way up, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a quick comment towards Councilman Torres. I actually, two years ago, in the summer, she and I actually went kayaking on the waterfront for free, out, and I just have to say, was such an incredible experience, and I really understood what you were saying before, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Vince Maciel, 215 Sheraton, Resolution 89, 240, 224. I would suggest that some investigation be done by the planning board, how to implement, or how to get some kind of relief at this train station for the over, the walkway over the street, which is Market Street. I think the city of Bayonne is putting in a public walkway, basically a developer's contribution to the community of Bayonne, a walkway across one of the, on 25th Street in Bayonne. Last meeting, I also addressed this council concerning the public service electric and gas increase of 11%. Based on the information I know, that the governor of the state of New Jersey stepped forward, and he says eventually that 11% increase will be taken off of the, the consumers' ability to pay, because they're gonna give, they're gonna use the federal infrastructure program to provide that money. But that won't take in, into effect until next year, so the rent, the people who are in rental units, who are in houses, are going to get an increase, it could be 25, it could be $50 for electric, as far as I know. And I'm saying this for a couple reasons. Obviously, I'm on a board, and I tried to show up in terms of, for four years, although some people say we, we haven't, we don't have a board. I don't believe that, I think we do have a board. And there's certain figures you just have to know, in the state of New Jersey. New Jersey is in the top, I think, 10%, or number 10, in terms of possible layoffs within the state. We are a business conscious, we have a developed, developed state, there's no question. But the, for the people who live here in Perth Amway, their median incomes are $26,000 or below, $21,000 if you believe the community survey that goes to individual houses and renters in the city. If one of those people, or hundreds of those people get laid off, where do they go? How do they afford to go on living? That's a question we should start asking. Um, I'll give you an example, in 2008, I had an income, and I had my own house, I made $35,000 in 2008. In 2009, through the economy and eventual layoff, I became, it became $18,000. I'm using that as an example of, if these kinds of circumstances happen to individuals within our community, where are their access? Where do they go? Where is the housing? And such, and such. I ask you that. One way they could go to establish that they have a value in this world, in this town, is the rent board. Hopefully, this council will continue to support that avenue. Landlords have aging buildings. Renters have minimum incomes or below. Another factor is a fast buck, somebody's gonna make a fast buck on individuals who can't afford to be able to have a basic living space. I think those are the issues we should start accepting, and not so much that everything is a dangerous city. I feel safe in walking through the city. I thank the city in terms of, the walkway they did along Route 35, that shows there is a positive possibility, that you do do things that benefit, and I am grateful, I walked there a week ago, and they have a beautiful walkway, and I know this council and the mayor, they approved a $300,000 engineering report. You should do the same for Market Street Bridge, get that done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to go to, close session.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
After the closed session, we'll come back, finish the caucus, close the caucus meeting, and start the council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need, okay, so we decided on the positions for the R council, there's one position that we don't have clarification on, before we make all the appointments. So, so far, what we're gonna do is, just do one, which is the chairperson, because, so they can continue, but in the next meeting, after we get the clarification on the other position, because then, there's a conflict, if we appoint everybody tonight. So, in the next meeting, we'll appoint, um, the positions that will be open then. So, we're gonna add to the agenda, reappointment of Solange Peña, as a Class B, a large, is it B? Okay, large B, to the Perth Amway Arts Council for a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2026. That'll be R91. R92 will be appointing Gregory Pavón, as a commissioner of the Perth Amway Housing Authority, to a five-year term to expire December 3rd, 2027. That's number two, 92. And R93 will be appointing Hedy Burke... And R93 will be appointing Hady Burke to the Perth Amboy Board of Adjustment as alternate number two.
No, no, as a regular member.
As a regular member.
She wasn't alternate.
Hold on, hold on.
Now that'll leave two alternates.
As a regular.
Bacon.
Member to fill an expired, when does that expire?
Unexpired term, uh, it's, um, I'll put them under here, hold on a second.
I just added.
24, I believe.
Is this year 24? 2024. Is it for our, for a year?
Because it's, um, the person who had it resigned.
Okay, so she has to finish and then, okay. So then it will expire December 31st, 2024, and that'll be R93. Next meeting, we will be appointing the rest of this art council. So, uh, as soon as we get the clarification from the, the other position.
Did you hear that? Chelsea, you heard that? Jay, you heard that?
Okay. Um, I thank everybody who came and, uh, interviewed today. It was great to see you, to be interested in volunteering for our, our beautiful city and the different, um, boards.
Next meeting.
Next meeting will be okay. Okay, now that we did that, I need a motion to adjourn the caucus meeting.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we move to the council meeting of February 28th, 2024, in the council chambers. Presiding Officer of the Council, Lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board, in the city clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the caucus meeting and the closed session, which is, right now, is 8:45. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out in the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Morales.
Present.
Councilman Puccio.
Present.
Councilman Torres.
Present.
Council President Tejeda.
Present.
Let's stand for the invocation and the closing. Please, our Lord, watch over this governing body. Please guide us on the right direction to make our, our city safe and also to progress for the betterment of our citizens. Also protect our children or, uh, the individuals in our community who has mental health and, um, that are struggling through any type of, um, problems. Also protect our children in their school, in their home, and in our city. Also, our armed forces, who are defending our freedom abroad and also in, in, in-house, protect their family. And with that, I say, amen. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of the God and the reasonable liberty and justice. Okay, uh, in the caucus meeting, we had the discussion, um, the interviews for the different volunteers, um, who want to participate in certain, um, boards that are, have opportunity for them. And I encourage everyone who li, um, who wants to participate to also continue. We still have, um, opening in other boards that we would like everybody who wants to be part of it to, to apply. Uh, five minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Ordinance number one, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, "Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons," ordinance number 380-85, an amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. And this is about deletions. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wants to speak on this? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, any against? I need a motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales.
Yes.
Councilman Puccio.
Yes.
Councilman Torres.
Yes.
Council President Tejeda.
Yes. Um, we, the number two and three were tabled, uh, the caucus meeting. Number four, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, "Vehicles and Traffic Ordinance," number 194-78, as amended, adopted September 19, 1978, also known as Chapter 414, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. This is about King Street Loading Zone. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wants to speak on this? Seeing none, I need a motion to adopt, uh, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales.
Yes.
Councilman Puccio.
Yes.
Councilman Torres.
Yes.
Council President Tejeda.
Yes. Agenda, public comments. Citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak for maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public to on agenda item only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're open to the public on agenda item only. Seeing someone.
Good evening, councilmen and councilwomen. Um, I apologize, I, um, had every intent to come here tonight, but we had a Black History Month celebration with our teens at the Brighton Avenue Teen Center. So I chose to be with the younger generation like myself and come here. But I did hear that there were some questions and, um, Diane Roman is my director. Um, although I'm not required to be here, you know, we work in concert and things of that nature. And, you know, she might not know all the nuances of what our operations are, but I'm here to clarify any questions that there are, so that way, you know, moving forward, you know, we understand like what's going on for my department or my office, it's not a department, it's a division of Human Services. Um, so I'm open for any questions. I know there were quite a few and, um, I'm here, I'm ready, you know, if anybody has anything for, to ask.
I did, I did have a question.
Sure, sure.
My question was about a recreation program.
Yes.
It dealt specifically with R76 and it deals with the, um, our understanding, um, between the Raverton High School Sailing Foundation. And my question was that several years ago, I enjoyed our Perth Amboy's Recreation, um, kayak and sailing program. And I was wondering, do we still provide those services? Did we provide them last year and are we gonna provide them this year? That's the first question.
Let me give you a little bit of historical, um, perspective, right? So this is specifically to high school sailing. Um, the school district, um, through Barry Rosengarten, accepted 10, um, sailboats from Princeton University and they started a sail, a sail program in the school system. Unfortunately, after COVID, they never returned that program. So those high school students have not been competing. So what we did with this organization, who has been there since the onset, whatever that is, 10, 12 years ago, um, we're working with.
Uh? 2009.
Yes, so we were, we're working with them now because we're gonna use their, their volunteers, their staff to help train our kids, to get our kids back on the water for sailing. So we're gonna use their people, their coaches, and then they're providing us monies for, to store, like boats and things of that nature. We're gonna turnkey that money to hire someone to be trained as a coach for our kids. We're pretty much picking up what the high school left off. So the kayak portion, which is totally different from what the high school sailing thing is, that was ours. And it was very successful because we used the same sailing coach from the school system, which at one time was Bruce Bertucci and it was subsequently Gary Signor. Unfortunately, Gary Signor last year, um, couldn't do it and it was late in the summer. So we weren't able to provide kayaking last summer because I'm gonna tell you something. I am very wary and I wanna be safe of our people going out there. So you definitely need somebody with a sail, with a powerboat license, to be on the water when our people are on the water. And then you also need staff to be on land because they have to make sure that people are wearing their PFDs and they get a little bit of orientation. But last year, since our lead person wasn't able to do it, we decided we couldn't move forward because I wasn't gonna put people on the water because there's, there's some, there's some intricacies to that. If, if it's bad weather and the current is strong, you know, we have, you know, novice people on a kayak, something may happen. Uh, if it's very low tide, it's difficult to get a kayak onto the water and the people and our staff have to drag that onto the water. Um, if it's a weather event, um, you know, we cancel if there's lightning. And we were typically doing it Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and that was open to the public. Anyone that was 100 pounds or over. But unfortunately, last year, we just didn't have the instructor to do it. And we've been engaging people now to have these qualifications to do it again this summer. Uh, we've been working with the purchasing agent to try to put out an RFP to maybe get a third-party vendor to put a kiosk out there so that people can rent them on their own for a nominal fee and then kind of like complement the program we're gonna do. We wanted to make it more accessible to people, so also do our free program. Both the days that we're not there, possibly having it out there for people who can't maybe make it the days we're having it.
So we no longer, so we, we have not provided.
We didn't provide it just last year.
Okay.
Just last year, but every year before that, we have.
And in the past, adults were able to sail awesome.
Well, we would have sailing and kayaking in the summer. We would put out two sailboats. And but the, well, the good thing about it was, is that our kids that were on the sail team used to assist the adults and they would pretty much, you know, captain the boats for the people to get on the sailboats.
Are we going to be continuing the adults kayaking and sailing?
That's our every intention to do so, but we need to find a qualified staff to do it and make sure all the safety parameters are in place to put people on the water.
So here we are, we're a day away from, a couple of days away from March, so.
Yeah.
You know, we're less than a quarter away from, you know, the warmer weathers. And hopefully, we'll have this because it seems that we're now letting another group take the responsibility. And I'm glad that they're going to help provide services for our children. But what we're helping provide them is one of the greatest waterways in the area. So, you know, I understand that they're helping provide our, our children with certain services. Are we actively notifying all of our children at that age level that they could participate in this program?
No, so we have to do a recruitment of these kids because one, they have to know how to swim. And two, we're gonna try them out to see if they can actually do this. We're not just gonna put kids out there that can't swim, get underwater, something may happen. So there's gonna be a recruitment that we do, we're gonna put it out. We're gonna work with the YMCA to do swim tests and things of that nature. And then the other benefit of this is that the Sailing Foundation wants to take three of our best sailors and put them in the yacht club sailing program in the summer at no cost to build on their skills and make them captains come the fall. So we have to build the capacity first within ourselves before we put too many kids because honestly, it's safety first for us.
No, no, exactly, but this is something that we should be working on. When COVID hit.
We have been, of course.
When COVID hit, one of the greatest activities that they said that could be done was any waterway because of the distance of the three people. And this might happen, we might have a surge of COVID again. So, but this water, having an active waterway is extremely important to our community. This is something that we market out and, um, I'm glad that we're providing this. I have a little issue with other groups coming and probably having the lion's share of our area or the timing. Now, when they're providing their programming, can adults, can we provide adult programming simultaneously? At the time, they're providing this at that area?
No, because this is a high school sail program.
I understand, but, but, no, no, I understand.
During the spring and the fall, so typically, we do art sailing and kayaking in the summer, so there is no conflict.
Okay, well, that's great because this is the first time I heard that. The first time, the other program, when Ms. Roman, she did not convey that, that this, a complete staggered times that one is during the spring and fall and that we provide our, our services.
That's our intention to do it in the summer month, of course.
So I, I, I hope we do have this during our summer. And, and I believe that almost every kid here in this community should have swim lessons since we invested so much money in the YMCA and since we already had some casualties in our waterways. We have very rough tides here and all of our children should be aware and should have some type of experience with these waterways. I'm glad that we're doing that, but at the same time, adults, we should be invested in adults activity also. So the kayak and the sailing for adults is important. We wanna attract these new residents coming in.
I agree with you 100%.
We have to provide these services for them, especially since we're on the waterway. But Vulcan does it, you know what I mean, and, and we could do the same.
But like I said, like, maybe it's just me, but I wanna make sure that we have the most qualified people out there. So if something did happen, you know, somebody could get to those people that are underwater right away and that we built capacity within our younger people so they could support our program. But definitely, it's not, it's something that we wanna bring back. It was a big hit. I think I remember you and your children, um, partaking in that program too, you know what I'm saying? So it's, it's something that we do wanna provide. You know, unfortunately, like, the one person we counted on, he just doesn't have an interest in doing it anymore.
We, we should have put all our eggs in one basket and just count on one person that we might know or have a relationship with.
Well, we put it out there, we interviewed quite a few people and unfortunately, we didn't feel like they were qualified enough to do it. Yeah, so, like I said, um, we're gonna try to build more capacity, we're gonna try to get people on the waterway more. Um, we work with our, with our police department and our fire department. We let them know when we're out there, so there's an emergency, they know where to go and where we're at and things of that nature. So we are being, trying to do our due diligence as much as possible.
That's great, thank you. And for the adult program portion of it, usually, when does that start?
We typically start our summer program in July and August.
So when can I get an update if we're gonna have this this year or not?
Well, we don't, we're in our summer programming stage right now, developing our summer programming. So we would have to give it like, I would say, beginning of April. We're gonna give another month as we start continuing to find our people, review all of our inventory of everything that we have in-house. Um, also, like, you know, make sure we have the PFDs, that they're not outdated and things of that nature. But like I said, in another month, we can give you an update all, about the RFP that we're gonna put out and to see if we found viable candidates for this program.
Right, can I get an update, if, if it is gonna start this way, I can start promoting it. I would love to promote this.
Oh yeah, so we typically, um, market our summer programs like in May.
Okay, great.
Okay, so like, we're already developing programming for the summer now.
Great, great.
Any other questions? And just to leave you, you got, just to leave you this, just, you brought up a good point, water safety. Ironically, I had a, a, a great conversation with Steve Jobin this morning. Uh, we were meeting and we're looking to expand our water safety programs, the Recreation Department and the YMCA. Currently, they do have it for second graders, but we're looking to expand it through middle school and high school because we want more kids in that pool, we want more kids in the water. And like you said, there were some tragedies in the past that we're looking to avoid. So like, you know, we're ever, always looking for opportunities to expand our programming. I think just today, um, there's on the agenda, a $61,000 award from the county to expand teen programming, where we're gonna start a youth police academy in the weekends. Um, we're gonna have some art programs, cooking classes. So, you know, we know that recreation, we can't always depend on the city budget to, you know, to push those things. So we're looking for every opportunity there is. Um, as a matter of fact, we're partnering with Major League Baseball now, the RBI program. And last year, they provided us like with $5,000 worth of equipment and our kids went to a tournament that they wouldn't have won in, in Jersey City, they would have gone to Florida for free. So we're looking for every opportunity that, and for adults and for arts and things of that nature. So if you ever have any questions, you can always reach out to me directly, be willing to meet with anybody, send you an email, a text message because this is, this is great for these things to happen in the cities, okay?
Now, there's the city sailing program, what do they, how do they contribute? So because this is, now you're saying this is going to affect, not affect, but this is almost, um, a perk for our high school, for our high school students.
Our residents.
Right, our residents. What does our high school, what do they, what does the school district with, uh, way larger budget than our municipal budget, how are they helping to contribute to this program?
Sailing is not a scholastic sport, it's more of a club sport. So that's what they had it in the high school. It's not, it doesn't fall under the regulations of the NJSIAA. So it's more of a club sport and that's what these other high schools do. And that's why they created that Sailing Foundation. So when you talk about what they're gonna provide us, the boats are theirs. You know, the boats actually belong to the school system that we're gonna utilize for sailing. So the biggest thing that we need is exactly that, is the boats, which they're gonna provide to us at no cost.
The boats were basically donated by someone else. We covered the storage of the boats.
Yes.
Another group, so, I, I, I'm seeing the bigger picture now.
No, no, so, and so they were maintaining those boats as well. And then we would use those boats in the summer for our program. So that was the, you know, the one hand washes the other type theory, right? And that's what we were doing. And we're hoping they bring it back because you're right, they do have a, a, maybe a more bigger budget. Maybe they'll develop, maybe once we develop it, they'll start bringing more students and we can collaborate on that.
Or maybe their team could be accredited and all of a sudden, we could have a winning champion team that could really celebrate it. Maybe those children could get scholarships. Maybe those children could get scholarships to some probably Ivy League schools that has these programs, so we could develop those opportunities.
So I'll tell you this one thing, I'll leave you with this. A few years ago, we had a young man that came from Puerto Rico, and he joined our sailing program. He got a scholarship for sailing to go to UCLA. So, you know, there is credibility in what you're saying, and this has happened. The only thing is that this is just a club sport, it's not a scholastic sport, so, you know. But, you know, like I said, I'm sorry to take up all your time if there's any other questions. I would take them now, if not, my wife is gonna be kind of mad that I'm not home for dinner, so. But thank you, have a good night, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do for our community and for our youth, your team as a whole.
I know, I know usually a lot of times in the YMCA, the sailing areas are rented out to other communities, and our children don't always get to use the pools in those facilities. But we were allocated that $16 million from the federal government. I worked on a little project on my own, and it would have cost us less than $2 million to convert International Park into a water complex outdoor pool that all of our residents, especially our children, would have been able to utilize on the waterfront to have a municipal pool that would have been provide swimming classes and job opportunities for our student, for our youth. This could have been done with a small portion of that money that came in, that would improve the lives of probably almost everyone in this community. But that's responsible development.
Anybody else?
Vince Maciel, 215 Sheraton Street. Bear with me, I, I know that most people know that the United States is involved at least three wars. I'm looking at the picture up on the, behind you, and obviously, we have a lot of honorable people serving in those particular struggles for, and using a lot of ammunition and a lot of bombs and a lot of things that destroyed other people. I made a statement at one of the last council meetings, and I'll repeat the statement, whoever, what representative is listening to this, seize fire now. We don't need another month or another day of what's happening in Gaza.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would just like to thank the council for giving me the honor and the privilege to serve under Housing Authority again. I'd just like to thank you. But there's one thing I wanted to clarify. I know you said five years, right? But I think you said expires in 2027.
This is the way it's written, it should be 20, yeah, 20, sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
But thank you, and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you for you do.
So I'll be 29, I'm thinking it's still 23. 29, right? Thank you very much. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public comments.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, reports, G.A. Goldie, CFO, controller submitted the following. 2023 annual financial statement. The check register report for the month of January 2024 in the total amount of $10,099,038 with 8 cents. Investment report for the month of January 2024. And New Jersey Division of Taxation Department of the Treasury submitted the state accreditation table for the year 2023. Ordinance, first reading, not public discussion. Number one, ordinance of the City of Port Amboy authorizing a one-year lease agreement with Easter Seals of New Jersey for office space in the Alexander Jankowski Community Center for non-monetary consideration pursuant to NJSA 48, column 12-14, to be used for a public purpose commencing January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz? Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes.
Number two, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48, column 4-45.14. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz? Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. All right, look over the resolutions, if you want to pull any. Anybody?
Number 72. Number 80. Number... 89.
Anybody else in here? You want to pull anything? Are you good, Paul?
Yes, I'm good.
All right, the consent agenda is R70 through R71 and R73 through R79, R81 through R88 and R90 through...
93.
R93. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
Yes.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. R72 authorizing contract with community grants, planning, and housing for provision of administrative agent services for the city's affordable housing plan in the amount not to exceed $179,800. I need a motion.
Move.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. R8224 authorizing an agreement with Hoplon Youth Organization, Inc., for the organization and operation of a recreational youth baseball and softball program for the 2024 season. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. R89224 directing the planning board to investigate whether the property is commonly known on the city's tax maps as block 11, lat 1 dot 07, block 16, lat 15, and 15.01, block 17, lats 1 through 8, and 46 through 64, block 35, lats 44 through 52, 53.01, 53.02, and 54 through 62, block 36, lats 1 through 11, 12 dot 01, and 13 through 15, and block 42, lats 25 dash 48, AKA certain properties on Market Street, 125 Second Street, 210 dash 224, Lewis Street, 96 dash 132, Second Street, 156 dash 190, Second Street, 147 dash 201, Second Street, 203 dash 223, Market Street, and 218 through 240, Second Street, should be designated as an area in the need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48, column 12A dash 1. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Councilman Torres?
No.
Council President Tejada?
Yes. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker on anything. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's open to the public. Anybody seeing none? I need a motion to close public portion.
We have...
Move.
Is there somebody? Oh, you wanted to speak? Okay.
All right, so we're on standby.
Where is that?
Rosie Corte Daniel, Chamberlain Avenue in Port Amboy. I have a problem I'd like the council to hopefully address. And that is, I go on Smith Street a couple of times a month to my drugstore. And usually, it's on the weekend, sometimes during week, but mostly, it's on the weekend. Of traffic on the sidewalk in Smith Street with people, teenagers mostly, riding their bikes in and out of people. And I had a situation where I was coming out of the drugstore and I had to fall back in, literally, because there was a man with this, I don't know what to call it, but it's a four-wheel vehicle riding down the middle of the sidewalk. And people are walking down with their strollers, with their babies, with their children, and they have to get out of the way of these bikes and these vehicles. Do something to perhaps put more control on Smith Street with the cars going up and down so that at least it's visible that the police are out there to make these people stop riding on the sidewalks. The bikes are not supposed to be on the sidewalks. We're not supposed to be ducking and trying to get out of the way. The man that was on this vehicle actually had the nerve to tell me to get out of his way. And I couldn't get my hand up fast enough to punch him in his head like I needed to, but I couldn't believe that it was, he said that to me. It's happening consistently. And I don't want to knock shop in my town. I have always fought for people to shop in Port Amboy because we have good stores here. But if people are running you off the sidewalk, and many of the people that do still shop in Port Amboy are the seniors because they don't drive anymore, or they don't have a vehicle to get to where they need to go. So this is where they shop, to get the things that they need. And if, I don't want to see somebody get run over and hurt because somebody is being sloppy with their own behavior. And hopefully, we can do something about that and have more police officers patrolling Smith Street on a regular basis so that those cop cars are visible at all times.
Yes.
That's what I, the first thing I wanted to say, and... Oh, number R73, Mars Habitat, Girl Place, thank you for that, because that's where we're gonna be building. We work with our Habitat. They're an excellent, excellent organization to work with. We've done a lot of work with them with the Housing Authority, and we did a lot of that. So that's another project we'll be doing together. And if you are, I know Greg is the only one on the agenda for the Housing Authority. If you're going to appoint him, I just want to thank you because he's really a very good commissioner.
You're ready that he's appointed.
Thank you, he's a good commissioner.
I would like to talk about the biking issue because this has been something reoccurring. And bicycling is probably one of the greatest alternative modes of transportation now, especially with the cost of gas and the problems with the emission on our community, not just what breathing, but on the climate. And a lot of progressive communities are trying to get their population to ride more bicycles than drive cars. Because even when I was a younger child, there was a lot less motor vehicles on the road, and children were able to ride bikes on the streets and do other things on the streets also. We shared the area. As we've had more cars on the road, it's very dangerous for children to bike. And this is one of the only communities around that does not have any bike lanes. I brought this up in the past. We have invested in bikes on the waterfront, that's nice, but we have not created bike lanes. So, yes, no one should be riding a bike on the sidewalk, but at the same time, we should make it safe for our children to ride bikes on the street because right now, it is not. It is not safe for our children to ride bikes on the street. I have two sons, one of them is an avid bicyclist. He rides his bike from Jersey City to Brooklyn by going through the GW, going all over. He bikes everywhere, champion bicyclist. Comes here, he does not like riding his bike around this town, says it's dangerous. The motor vehicles do not respect bicyclists, and there are no bike lanes. So we're talking about our children at the same time who might not just fall off the bike, but get into a real horrible motor vehicle accident and get hit by a car. I think it's the only responsible thing for our administration to do is to start looking into creating bike lanes. This way, we could share the roadways, where the pedestrians could walk down the sidewalks, the cars could drive on the streets, and the bikes would have their lanes and not interfere. But it is our responsibility to do that. We cannot put all the burden on the children, take away all of their access to any recreation that they've had in the past. And then, and then what does that leave them? It is our responsibility to make sure that everyone is safe and that these roadways are safe. It is a shame that we have not invested in creating bike lanes.
I agree 100% in what you just said because we are one of the few communities that don't have bike lanes. And I hope that maybe that's something that we can look at doing, putting in the budget for next year or whenever. But most of what I'm talking about are not children. They're older teenagers or grown men that are doing this bike riding and that, that other, what's, Puccio, what's the name of that vehicle I'm talking about?
Aquari.
Oh, okay, because I didn't know what the name was. I know what I drive, that's, you know, I'm limited in knowing all these things. But it's, it's amazing. And then for him to tell me to get out of his way, like, what was he doing on the sidewalk? You have to wonder the mentality of this insanity. And I don't want to see somebody my age and older get knocked over because they happen to be walking down the sidewalk and they got in his way or anybody's way that's, you know, on these, these...
Okay.
Two-wheelers, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
I don't know, Mr. Green, maybe we can bring that up to...
I texted the chief about the people riding on the weekends, just so you know. So he's gonna look into that. I told him that...
Anybody else?
I have a question about that. He said he texted the chief. Who sets the policy if we're going to have police presence? Who sets the policy? Is it the police chief or the police director? Because we asked for years to have more presence. Who is the person who sets the policy?
Well, that's something I would know because...
Well, that's something I would know because I lived through the police director days. Police directors are civilians who are responsible for the budget and policy. The police chief, the highest ranking police officer in the police department, whether it's a police chief, deputy chief, or a captain, is responsible for the deli- to how manpower is deployed and how to use the resources.
So something of additional presence that would fall on the chief?
The chief.
Okay.
Carolyn Maxwell, Team Sixty-Six, A High Street, Perthamboy.
Now, what about these, um, executive scooters?
Get close to the mic.
You got these scooters and executive bikes. They ride these on the sidewalks. I don't consider those bicycles. These are motorized. Okay, I have a problem with those two.
Carolyn, they're illegal to ride on the sidewalk.
You think?
They're illegal. Right. They're illegal, and they have to abide by the Title Thirty-Nine, the motor vehicle laws.
When they say bicycle scooters, they're not bicycles.
But at the same time, we do need bike lanes. We- there are- there are more scooters, there are more bicycles, we're e-bikes. Our city invested in bikes on the waterfront. There's large white beach bikes on the waterfront. We're- we're putting people at harm's way because we're giving them these vehicles, but we're not providing them safe passageway.
Anytime you have to try something up in your house, plug it in. It's not supposed to be on the sidewalk. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Even regular bicycles are not supposed to go on the sidewalk, okay? But I've seen it done constantly. But at the same time, I feel for the people also because there's no safe place for them to ride their bicycles. And I am shocked that here we are in twenty twenty-four, no bike lanes in the city of Perthamboy.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
I need a second.
Second.
All- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council comments?
Thank you, everyone, for being here and congratulations to those appointed to the positions. And since you're here, thank you for your years of service and your years of consistency. And Dorothy as well for advocating for you and commending you on the wonderful job that you do. The Housing Authority is- is wonderful. No problem, yes. And Black History Month, we're still in February. This, I don't even want to single out. All the depart- so many departments have been doing amazing at celebrating Black History. There was actually an event at the library where there was somebody from a neighboring town. They're like, oh, we came here because our town didn't- didn't provide this specific event. So I just want to say to the city as a whole, because I know a lot of different departments and schools are doing their unique way to celebrate Black History Month, which is awesome to see. And yesterday there was also Dominican Independence Day. Great job to the coordinators from Perthamboy and as well for the county commissioners within. They had the event in New Brunswick and honored, of course, two people we know that are pillars in our town, among many others, Edison and Michelle. So congratulations to those. Vengap West, the Colombian restaurant, congratulations on your grand opening. And it's great to see new businesses in town. As far as inclusivity for our parks, I think that's awesome. And we should continue that route. So great job to the OECD Department. And lastly, just keep our teens active with everything that the REC Center does, the YMCA Knights as well, the Brighton Teen Center. There's so many things for our teens, especially how the world is, is keep our teens active, involved. And good night. God bless.
Councilwoman Morales?
I just want to thank everyone. It was great to see, you know, a lot of people here tonight and participating. I would like to congratulate Mr. Pomont for being reappointed and thank you for your service for our community and job well done. You've got a great team. I can't commend you enough, all of you. And I'm sorry that I did miss out on a lot of events this past weekend, this weekend, with the Dominican flag raising here in town and also in New Brunswick. I was unfortunately sick last week with the norovirus. So I am warning everyone out there to just please, aside from coronavirus, there is other viruses going out there and it was not fun. I was out of commission for pretty much a week. And just, everyone, take care. As far as the towing issue goes, we are working on it. I really am for getting you guys, you know, meeting where you guys want to, you know, be. I agree. Everything is going up. Prices are going up. I mean, I go to ShopRite and I'm like, everything is so expensive, you know? And I said, everything's going up, and I even say it, except my salary. But, you know, I- I get you. So we are- we are working on it and hopefully we can get it moving, okay? Just want to let you know that. And also regarding the, there was comment from one of the gentlemen earlier, from Mr. Gonzalez. He did say that he was doing constructive criticism within us, and I do appreciate that. And I- I thank him for giving us constructive criticism, especially, you know, because sometimes we don't realize what we're doing ourselves. So that was, you know, that was really great that he did come up here to make that comment, especially being positive and staying positive. You know, it's all about, you know, there's always things that we can find negative in- in everything. But it's how you view things, whether you view things with the glass empty or the glass full. But me personally, I like to view the glass full and look at the positive things that are going on, especially things that are going on in the city. And there are good, a lot of positive things happening in the city within the past few years, so. Another thing, also there was another comment by another gentleman, Mr. Ross, about a city employee, and he was pretty much accusing the entire council here. And I, I speak for myself, but maybe on behalf of the rest of the council, where he was kind of accusing us that we are not taking steps, you know, to do anything about it. Technically, we really can't do anything about it. We don't have, you know, the- the right, the rights or, you know, to disciplinary, to take disciplinary action against the individual. But, you know, well, we, you know, we just hope, you know, things, we- we got to do things the right way. Unfortunately, in the past, things were not done properly and it ended up that the city was in turn sued. So we are just trying, you know, I believe that the administration is trying to do what they believe they can do for now, you know, the right way. And I think pretty much that's about it. Hopefully everybody stays safe out there, like I said. There's other viruses going around, so please be careful. Thank you.
Councilman Puccio?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, as somebody that rides a bicycle all over the place, you know, I'm a long-distance cyclist, so I put about three hundred miles to five hundred miles a month once the weather gets good. And one of the places I do avoid is the city of Perthamboy. When I'm riding my bike, I leave the city and make my way to Sandy Hook and back. So with that said, I understand with that. And I also see the other stuff. You know, people riding on the sidewalk, disregarding the- the traffic laws, and somebody's going to get hurt one day. With that said, the other thing, and, you know, and I promise, Ms. Daniels, I would say something positive, and I'll save that for the last ten seconds. That the citizens want us to do is to have their eyes and their ears and to look out for their interests, whether we like it or not. You know, my colleague is right in what she says, that we don't have the authority. But we also have an obligation. So, and, you know, yes, we can't tell anybody to do something to somebody. And I- and the people that commented today know that. They know that. The president and I served on the board for a long time, and we know that you can't talk about personnel in public. So, you know, and that's the only reason why we do keep our mouths shut. And like my colleague to my right, Mr. Torres, he was right. You know, and the only thing I will say, there has been a lot of discussions, but those discussions take place behind closed doors. With that said, and, you know, you know, at the end of the day, the citizens are our bosses. And they're the ones that set what we do by calling us, by emailing us, by talking to us. You know, people knock on my door all the time or I see somebody. You know, I don't like being called out. None of us like being called out because we're defenseless when we're on this side. And anybody could say whatever they want to say about us. And then a lot of times people get, you know, they get all bunched up about something because, you know, we're asking questions. That's what we're, that's what we're here for. We're here to- to ask questions, to ask those hard answers, you know? You know, it's not personal. It's not personal when we're- when we're asking those questions of a director or a chief. You know, that's part of our, when we took the oath. And, you know, again, what happens in a small town like Perthamboy, we all know one another, you know? And sometimes I can honestly tell you that I pull my punches sometimes. I don't always say what I want to say because I don't want to hurt nobody's feelings. So, you know, at the end of the day, give us a break, you know? And everybody is guaranteed the right to speak. Whether we like what they say or not, nobody should ever be stopped from speaking. And, you know, and again, I think it's a quote in some movie, The American President, you know, when he finally defends his girlfriend in the end and he talks about, "The beauty about this country is if somebody could get on that microphone and get in your clock and say a lot of things about what you're not doing and what you're not doing right, and they have the right to say it." And we also have the right to voice the citizens' concerns and look out for the citizens. I'm good.
Thank you. Councilman Torres?
I could not have put it better than my colleague, Councilman Puccio. I have no comments. Thank you.
I also want to say thank you to each and every one of you who came tonight for the interviews, for the- for the different boards, and congratulations on your appointment and the rest of them. And we'll continue making sure that our boards are filled. I also want to comment. I know there have been a lot of negative things and a lot of accusation that sometimes it's said the wrong way. It's being said the wrong way. But we all are working very hard, and I really appreciate a lot of directors that we have that are doing the right thing. All of them, I will say. Everybody in this city is trying to do the best for this town. Yes, there's a lot of things that have to be taken care of, but it's a lot of stuff. And we have to do it slowly and do it right. And I know that we are moving in the right direction. And Mr. Adele, we are working on it. We have been speaking, and- and we're going to do it right. We're going to do it right for you and do it right for the citizens because we also have to think of the citizens of this town. Because that money is not coming from the city hall. It's coming from the citizens. And we have to protect you and them. So that is our position. That's what we are elected for. And we don't want to make you feel uncomfortable. We want you to be right, to be okay, and also our citizen. So let's continue celebrating our city and making sure that we have the right thing for our citizens. God bless you all and have a good night. I need a motion to close.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. It's nine forty. Thank you all for staying so late. Thank you.